Okay, let's call this meeting order and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Fowler.
Here.
Doug Shasso.
Here.
Allison Howe.
She called in and is ill tonight.
Clinton Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Here.
First item on the agenda is presentation of a new application for the city's facade program. Ms. Crossway.
Hi, good evening. I'm just coming to present on an application that we've received for a facade improvement. It is for the Holistic Health Center on 305 Main Street. They're requesting the maximum grant amount of $3,000 and what they're looking to do is to replace the four windows that are on the second story of the building, which is front-facing. We've reviewed it internally and everything looks good to go. I've gone to the site and they are definitely in need of changing out the windows and I think it'll just, again, just add more beautification to that building and overall aesthetics of Main Street. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Crossway? No, it's nice to see utilization of your program.
Yes, definitely. And again, any other businesses that would like to apply for this grant program, the application is available online on our city website or they can contact me directly and I can always send it over to them.
Good use of the money.
Yes.
Enjoy it, Joanne. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing on ordinance number 1235 and the ordinance amending the Fort Morgan Municipal Code concerning licensing and identification of pet animals. This is a public hearing, please keep public comment to the issues before the city council. Each speaker is asked to limit comment time to three minutes unless a speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I have the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under the guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues and to set a limit on the duration of testimony if I determine it necessary in light of the number of people who have signed up to testify. First is the issue of the legal notice. Mr. Brennan, was this hearing properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on September 7th.
Next is presentation of the ordinance. Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Your Honor. There have been no substantive changes since the presentation of the ordinance at the last meeting. I know we have representatives from the Humane Society here today and I would invite them to come up and speak to the importance of this ordinance if they're so inclined. And I think we were also looking at potential opportunity if there was someone from the Health Department that might come tonight and talk about the issue of rabies and some of the concerns that were raised at the last meeting. Other than that, there are no substantive changes from the last reading of the ordinance.
Next is public comments. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on this issue? Seeing none. I would ask the city clerk if you received any oral or written comments prior to this public hearing.
Not through my office, Your Honor.
Council discussion. Are there any questions for the council or any discussions?
Your Honor, I just had one phone call opposing the dog ordinance licensing.
Okay.
And I would just remind people that during the last reading of this ordinance, we had Ms. Mullen come up and she spoke very eloquently about the necessity of doing this, about the issues that we have within our community with rabies. And part of the reasoning behind this ordinance is the fact that being cognizant of people having their animals vaccinated is very, very important. We're also looking at some simple ways that if people run into this, there's some advantages of this for people once they have been able to have their animals registered that provide for them, you know, if your pet gets lost. I mean, most people, if their pets are very upset if their animal gets lost, being able to return them back to where they belong. We also, I think we talked a little bit about if your animal is registered and should get out and should get picked up and detained momentarily at the Humane Society. On our first violations, I believe the city has agreed to a get out of jail free card. So there's a benefit, you know, for people that are wondering, well, why would I do this, other than it being the right thing to do to protect your animal and protect the community, that there is that benefit. So I would encourage people to, you know, if this ordinance passes, I would encourage people to take advantage of it. It's a nominal fee that goes towards the Humane Society to keep them, you know, not profitable but able to do business and they do a fabulous job in our community if they can throw out any ticket.
I did have one person that made a comment to me when I was uptown last Friday. Their question was if their dog or female dog gets out and it is picked up and put in the Humane Society, they use it for breeding, is there, I mean, is there a concern about that dog or their dog being neutered or spayed just because it got out and?
I don't believe so. The way currently, we currently run the shelter is that until they forfeit the animal, meaning they leave it there, don't come pick it up, then there's that opportunity to happen. If they're licensed and that happened, we would contact the owner and say, hey, your animal's down here, you need to come pick her up. And if it's the first time offense that year, then they get the get out of jail free card. They just come pick it up and take it home and pay the fee to the Humane Society for holding it, but there's no ticket, there's no, you know, get the pass, go.
Okay, so they don't, before release, there it's not spayed or neutered as a requirement?
Yeah, that's not a requirement before the release.
But they are spayed and neutered if they are adopted, correct?
Yeah.
Right, and that's only after the dog, that the pet has been there for?
Five days.
Five days, you know, so they have a period of time to check, so.
That's a very good question.
That would be very unfortunate.
Council have any other comments regarding that? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close or continue the public hearing.
Your Honor, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. I have a motion by Lisa Northrup and a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Council action. Ms. Williams.
Yes, council, your possible actions on this are to approve the ordinance, approve the ordinance with changes, vote down the ordinance or continue to adate certain.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution approving second and final reading of ordinance number 1235, amending the Fort Morgan Municipal Code concerning licensing and identification of pet animals and authorization to publish by title.
Second. Resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries on a unanimous vote of six to zero with Councilmember Howe absent.
And I think just as a practical matter, the enforcement of this probably won't go into place until about January. I know the Humane Society has some time to get some things together so that they can start the process and want to thank them for their partnership with the city because they save our police department a lot of hours in having to operate the animal shelter. So, thanks.
Thank you for being here today.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing on ordinance 1236, an ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 5, Article 1, Chapter 5, Article 6 of the Fort Morgan Municipal Code for the purpose of establishing a formal business registration and licensing program for the city of Fort Morgan. Once again, this is a public hearing, please keep public comment to the issues before council. Each speaker is asked to limit their comments to three minutes unless a speaker represents a group, in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues and to set a time limit on the duration of testimony if I determine it necessary in light of the number of persons who have signed up to testify. This is a public hearing and in order to maintain order in it, if council has a question, please be recognized and we'll go in that order. If you have a question or you have a comment, please come up to the podium, sign in. Do they get sworn in, Mr. Brennan?
They just need to sign in.
Come up and sign in your name and address at the podium. And if you are speaking for a group, let me know that I could allow you additional time. Otherwise, I'm going to enforce the three-minute time limit. So let's try and keep it moving along and in order. First is a legal notice. Mr. Brennan, was it properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing also appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on September 7th.
Next is presentation of the ordinance. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a little background before I turn it over to Jeff. When I came to the city almost nine years ago, I noticed that the municipal code called for business licenses, but that was not done in practice. The code still today says that anybody doing business in the city shall have a business license and renew it every year. That's never been done, to my knowledge, or else it faded away years ago, I'm not sure. But it's been talked about since before I came to the city and just never really got off the ground. In 2016, I wrote an academic paper for a certification program at CU Denver on establishing a formal business licensing program for the city. I presented that proposal to the city later in 2016 and got direction from the council to move forward. That effort kind of slid from the front burner to the back burner a couple of times due to some staff changes in the internal working group we had putting together the proposal, some possible legal hurdles with the Wayfair, Mayfair, Wayfair decision and so on. And this was also seen as a step in towards self-collecting of sales tax and so that kind of complicated things. And so here we are today, this is the main event, obviously, and, you know, we seem to have caused quite a bit of controversy. I'm not sure that there's not misunderstanding of what we're proposing, but I know Jeff got a lot of questions today at a luncheon he attended where this was the main topic and so I think I'll turn it over to him, he can.
Thanks, John, I appreciate it. First of all, just a few comments and then a suggestion, Your Honor, on how we might be able to go through this in order to maybe assist the public in what comments they might have regarding this. First of all, I want to point out that this process and all the comments that we've received from council members and the public have been very helpful for staff to help us understand what does the policy need to look like that we're looking at replacing our current policy. As John pointed out, this has been in the law and one of the issues that came up today was enforcement of the law and was a long discussion, are you going to enforce the law? How do you enforce the law? And the reality is, when we looked at enforcing the current law, I think it would create a lot of issues. We wanted to make sure that we had something in place that made more sense than what we currently have. And the public has been so engaged and resourceful to us. I think the comments that we received, I spent a good hour or so with the realtors today, they had very good comments, very good questions, good feedback, and I think we're going to hear that again tonight to help us in what do we need to put into this ordinance to make it work for the city of Fort Morgan. Some ideas and suggestions based upon the feedback that I've heard from council members and the realtors today and other business owners is that we need to provide a benefit to the businesses. How is this a licensing program of benefit to the businesses? And I'll address that really quick. You know, when we looked at this, we wanted to make sure that it wasn't a problem, it wasn't another thing that businesses had to deal with or another fee. And that's why we're proposing that there is no fee. You just will have it set up online, you go in, you fill it out, you're done. And I believe it's a two-year process, right, John?
Two-year renewal.
Two-year renewal.
Not proposing.
We want to make it a short application, that was another recommendation. Don't require people to put on a lot of information about their business. It's my understanding that a town near us to the west has a similar licensing program, it's $10 fee, and there's certain requests for information like how much money did you make or how many employees you have. That definitely is not our intent and I know that Connie's worked really hard on coming up with the information that we need to put this into the database that we're working with Casell. We need, another recommendation was, you know, as far as what we need to do is we need to be consistent in the enforcement. But then going back really quick, sorry, passed up something here. What are some of the other benefits to the businesses? And I wanted to point that out. It, I think it demonstrates to new customers in the community that this business is recognized by the city and allowed to do business in the city. I think it also provides an important aspect to economic development information. When new businesses come in or businesses are working with SBDC to put together their business plan for a bank and getting financing for their business, I think it's very helpful for them to know, you know, how many widget shops are in the city of Fort Morgan in filling out their business application. The information that we collect would be open to the public as well, so other businesses could look and say, okay, what other kinds of businesses are here locally doing business in the city of Fort Morgan? Another thing is, I know today after our conversation, the city of Brush is actually looking at a similar kind of a business licensing program. They were contacted by the Chamber of Commerce over there to start looking into it. It hasn't been taken to their city council yet, but they're looking into it because the Chamber of Commerce over there, which is, Brush has a very strong Chamber of Commerce, is looking at how can they get this information together to help them, help the businesses that they serve in their community. So I think there are a lot of benefits to businesses being involved in it. The other thing that came out was, we need to clarify tonight is the definition of doing business in the city of Fort Morgan, what does that mean? Had a lot of really good questions today from realtors, what does that mean? And I think we'll have a good conversation about that. The other thing was be as little intrusive or less intrusive as possible in what we're doing. Let businesses, don't put another layer of red tape or problems for businesses to have to deal with and make the process easy. Tonight, we're focused on the language of the ordinance to avoid unintended consequences. And my recommendation, or I guess something I'd ask the council to consider and the mayor to consider, is that we go through it really quick, section by section, with the attorney to kind of go through and highlight what does each section stand for. I know that there's copies of the ordinance in the back for people that want to look at it as we go through it. We have a limited number of copies back there. And then there are some places in the ordinance that I've already met with Nina and we've discussed them that, based upon comments today, probably don't reflect the culture of our community. And I'll let Nina speak to where we came up with this language, but I think there's some stuff as we go through it, I'll recommend and have recommended to her to take it out. But since it's been the first reading, I think it's necessary for council to make that recommendation that those things come out. So anyways, that's kind of where we're at with the process. And if you'd like Nina to kind of go through it step by step before we have public comment, I think we can answer some questions and maybe limit what comments people have based upon what we're going to do to change it. So, that's what I got.
Nina, do you want? Yes, would you, thank you, council and mayor. So, the first thing is that this ordinance deals with Chapter 5, two articles, Article 1 and Article 6. So that might help some confusion. So first, the Article 1 is just business licenses in general. Then within Chapter 5 in our code, there's all different kinds of, all different kinds of specific licenses such as adult businesses, alarm service, liquor, bicycle. So that vendor peddler license is that one very specific type of license, which is separate and apart from the Article 1, which is business licenses in general. So the first, you know, section will start with Chapter 5, Article 1, then we have Section 5110 violation. This just establishes that's a violation to not have a business license to help with that enforcement piece. 5120 is the scope of the chapter. This is a legislative intent. So this is the part where we've heard, you know, some community feedback and some staff and council feedback. This definition or legislative intent was drafted in a manner to clarify or help, to be helpful, but it seems that it might have caused more confusion. So this part can be pared down and either deleted or shortened. We looked at other codes within the state and some just say, any person conducting business in the city, engaging in business of any type, or regularly sells, you know, that type of tangible personal property, these are different types of definitions. So we could, if we have council direction, we can talk about that. I have all different kinds of examples to make it more narrowly tailored. Again, we wrote that to try to be more helpful, but sometimes, you know, that it kind of went the other way, so that's not a problem. And then the applications just deals with that the application, you know, you go to the city clerk to fill out this application for the business license. And then the next section, 5140, that the city clerk after investigation, meaning they'll look through the license and issue it. And the next one is 5150 licenses. Every license, you know, so you apply for a license and once you're given a license, it'll include the kind of license, the person, the period. Section 5150C is something that can be pared down or deleted based on what Jeff has spoken about causing, I guess, concern to the community, where it says, you know, following any merger, the tax division shall have the right to audit the merged business to make sure. We're fine with deleting that expiration and renewal of license, so it says every odd number year, that's where you get to the two years. And the renewal notice is sent to each licensee and then they need, then they need, that's a reminder for them to renew.
Nina, going back really quick, just to be clear, we're looking and requesting council to consider the deletion of Section 5-1-50 licenses subsection C in its entirety, correct?
The, except for the part, no license shall be transferred from one person to the other, but?
Right.
And then, so just keep that first sentence.
And then everything below that would be stricken from the ordinance? Okay. Just want to be clear.
Yes, thank you. So 5170 is denial of license. How can the city clerk?
Nina, before you go?
Oh, yes.
Before you go on, I just want to make note, there was some confusion about the elimination of 5150, what used to be 5150E. That was the part that the mayor suggested last time at the last meeting that we removed that, and so that is gone. That was the part that said city officials can enter the premises during any reasonable time to perform their inspections. People mistook that to mean inspect financial records and go through your books and things like that. It was not, that was not the intent and so we deleted that entire paragraph. So now there is a 5150E in there, but that was what used to be F.
Thank you. So yes, we took the direction of council and deleted that section. So back to 5170 denial. We propose deletion of subsection B, that's not necessary for the purposes of this and due to, again, not wanting there to be confusion of overarching authority. And the, but you need to have, you know, I've heard the concern that the clerk is just going to deny what he feels he can, that is illegal and unconstitutional, you can't do that. So, but this section is important to have because if you do need to deny, revoke, or suspend a license of any kind, you need to have that listed in your code if you then later need to bring it to a hearing. That's for fairness of the person who holds the license. So that's why that section is necessary.
And which one was?
A deny, oh, to delete subsection B in denial of license. So fees, it's not, there's going to be no fee, that'll be in the, well, I guess doesn't need to be in the fee schedule because it would be zero, but. Cancellation of license, again, this needs to be here so that, to address that concern that the city clerk can't just do what he pleases, which he would not, but it needs to be very specific, very limited reasons why the license would be canceled. And that's the list, that's what you see listed, you know, not paying taxes, mistake or illegal issuance. Suspension, conditional suspension revocation, that's the same type of idea. Before that happens, it needs to be for a very particular reason. And then whenever that may happen, then the licensee has the right to bring a hearing for, you know, to contest that, to say, well, you shouldn't have revoked my license because of this. And that is very detailed, this section, we can talk about that. It was just to try, again, not to, you know, to have everything written out, but if that's a little, it's more confusing than it's worth and certain parts can be tweaked, but that is just to further explain what notices, what is, what are the parameters? Then if we keep going, then we are in section two. So again, this, let's take this separate and apart because some people have been taking the language, I was in Chapter 5, Article 6, and applying it to why they're against business licenses in general. But this is only for peddlers, solicitors, so this is vendors, you know, and it explains what a peddler is, someone who's, they're temporarily kind of selling something, you know, local dealer, setting up a table, setting up a tent, that kind of thing. This is very standard type of license. So that's separate and apart from general business licenses. And then it goes on to say the fee, license required, what's exempt? Non-resident vendor. It just explains, again, it's unlawful to engage it without because we're trying to say, well, to, that's the only way you could enforce, needing to have the license for the vendor.
So Nina, when we're talking vendors?
Yes.
Well, we do many festivals and we do a lot of nonprofit events that bring in vendors and those, there's a whole process for those people for sales tax revenue, there's a whole process. Are those what we're talking about here? And, I mean, if somebody's coming in, like the car show coming up this weekend, we have vendors that are going to be here for the car show, how would that apply to a car show vendor?
What's done in practice right now is the organizer of the event, whether it's What's done in practice right now is the organizer of the event, whether it's the car show or Bob Stock, or, you know, chamber events like Glenn Miller or whatever, they, they basically rent or lease the park or surrounding area and they're in charge of the event and they deal directly with the vendors. And basically, because we're a state-collected city, merchants have to remit their sales tax to the state anyway. So we don't get involved in licensing individual booths or food vendors or things like that. We do license the permanent, more permanent food trucks in town, but not the itinerant ones that show up for those.
So would this be more like, we have a horrific hailstorm? And then massive amounts of people come in to go door-to-door trying to get people to utilize them to replace the routes? Is that, I'm just trying, it confused me, so if it confused me, I meant?
Oh, of course.
Also confused other people as to what that is.
Door-to-door is a separate license as well.
Okay. So this is more someone setting up a tent, maybe at the?
Solicitor.
Setting up a tent to sell peaches, oh, not produce, produce exempt, but to sell fireworks or, you know, not associated with that larger event, because that's separate. And then to your point, when you said not for profit, in Section 5, 640, we say exempt sales as produce. I've seen in other codes where we exempt not-for-profits, so that could always be amended to make sure that that is addressed, if you would like.
I had somebody ask me saying with, and then I assume this is where he was talking about saying, well, if you're talking about that you have to be licensed if you put up a table for sales and everything, then is that going to count Girl Scout cookies, Boy Scout popcorn, that sort of stuff? And so they were worried that it was going to be that far-reaching and that all of a sudden you're having it affect you that way, too.
Right. So that's why I would recommend amending the exempt sales to include not-for-profits, if the clerk agrees with that.
Yeah, you know, Kevin, that's an eternal problem, lemonade stands, Girl Scout cookies, things like that. They are technically required to have a permit, but we don't require them unless we get a complaint. The health department kind of treats it the same way. If they're selling lemonade and somebody complains that they're using tainted water, the health department will shut down a lemonade stand. So, you know, we try not to be the bad guys on those kinds of things, but we kind of look the other way on those, but those wouldn't be included, so.
Okay.
Or, yeah, and you could also add in the exempt sales, produce and not-for-profit organizations.
It's kind of a common sense exemption. There's just certain things that?
Yeah, I'm just saying it can be added in the text of the code in, for at least not-for-profits. And that would be Section 5, 640. And then we recommend in 5, 650 to delete subsection E and F due to concerns, seizure of property and investigation and issuance for zoning officials. That's not totally necessary for these purposes. And then again, when you turn the, a lot of you have the same page, but grounds for denial, same type of thing. You need to have specific grounds for denial that are very narrowly tailored, and that's what this is. Only if there's fraud, failure to comply with the chapter, or to remit taxes, are you going to deny this license. That's the only available reasoning. And it needs to be listed in the code so that there is not overarching usage of this. Which, just to be clear, this type of, these type of sections are with, you know, exist around the state and probably around the country. And there's usually no, hardly any overarching activity. If there ever were, then it would be struck down by a court. So then if we go on to zoning subsection, it says J, L, but it probably should be K. Zoning, all peddlers conducting activities, that's just, they won't be near public prop, 10 feet from public property right of way. That's just so that they're, you know, if all these peddlers come down to Fort Morgan one day, they're not obstructing anything. So that, that kind of goes in with that, that's trying to assist. And these are, again, not non-residents. And hours of operation, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. They must comply with traffic and parking laws, they must display their licenses. And that's about it. If there's any questions, I can answer them or you can direct, have public comment and then ask me further questions or however the mayor sees fit.
Section H under whatever we just went through?
Yes.
5.6.50-H, issuance upon payment of fee if there is not a fee for this?
Well, that, so that, when we said not a fee, we were talking about general business licenses. This is for peddlers and people who are coming outside of your city to sell things. That there should be a fee to that, I'm sure, and we'll amend the fee schedule.
Because that was?
If somebody is selling something from out of, correct? Am I correct in that?
Your Honor, correct.
Yes, there is currently a fee for that, for door-to-door soliciting and for itinerant peddlers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And so, you know, one of the things that we're looking forward to tonight is getting direction from city council on where you would like us to go. Ultimately, we've made this a priority based upon direction that we've received, and we want to make sure that this is the direction that we need to be going as staff and look forward to hearing the public comment on what we can do to improve what we've got. So. Yep. I think we're done presenting the ordinance. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay.
Next is public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this issue?
Yes, I have some questions. Is this a preamble to the city collecting its own sales tax?
It appears is what was stated earlier, yes.
So we would, would we have to go through this same, excuse me, masturbational process again in order to start the collection of sales tax by the city?
Yes. Yeah, and just to provide the information, to do self-collect tax, we had to go through and make sure that our software could accommodate that. And that's one of the things that Connie has spent a lot of time, making sure that we can collect, self-collect in our current financial software. It also has a component in there for business licensing. And before we move to that next stage of self-collect tax, we looked at, okay, can we make this work with business licensing? So this is the first step before we go there. And there would have to be a second ordinance that would authorize the staff to do self-collect. So yeah, there will be another public process to, you know, take public feedback and make sure that whatever we pass is reflective of what the community wants.
But there are two separate issues.
Yes.
I mean, you could do a business licensing program and not do self-collect tax. Or you could not do business licensing and do self-collect tax. So they're not mutually?
Right.
If we do one, it doesn't mean we have to do the other.
That is correct.
I believe you do have to have the sales tax for the business licensing set up for the sales tax. That's all I, if I'm?
Yep.
But you could do business licensing without, we don't, we?
You can do business licensing without doing self-collect.
Correct. And so if the issue is that people are not in favor of self-collect tax, I just want to make sure we understand those are two completely separate. They, they may intersect if we, if, you know, the taxpayers and the community as a whole agrees that that's what we should be doing, but they're not, they're not, they're not mutually exclusive.
They're not married together?
Correct.
No.
But they will have to go through the same.
We have to do that every time we bring something?
Well, hopefully, then the next time you bring it up, that you will have printed it in print, that people could read and not in such a long article, that by the time you get to the bottom, you forgot where in the hell you started. So.
And that would be something for the newspaper to, to take back to, to take back to the newspaper, that the print is too small for people to read.
My other question is, how much do you anticipate the kickoff cost to be in this license?
Well, we've already put things in motion. As far, when you mean kickoff costs, is there a specific line item for this or?
For PA, for a tax attorney?
What is it going to cost a business?
The office personnel?
That would be sales tax.
Oh, for sales tax? We're still evaluating that right now. And I think when you're done with your public comments, we've got Connie Musgrave, who has done a lot of work on this, that can probably explain some of this, would be helpful to you and to the rest of the public on what we're doing. But as far as costs go on that self-collect, we're still evaluating that. We have one employee that's dedicated to working on this and making that happen. And we haven't determined if we would have to add an auditor. One of the things that we have, information we have, and obviously this is kind of off topic, Your Honor, if you want us to, you know, save sales tax for another time, but...
Well, we can touch on it since it is going to be?
Sure.
intertwined, but I mean, let's not get off in the weeds on that. This is basically going to stick with business licensing. The sales tax, self-collect will be a portion of it, but I'm, I don't want to get off in the weeds. I'm going to allow Connie to clarify what she can as far as the intermingling of that.
Well, I would think if you've got a business license, that you'd also have a state sales tax license.
Not if you're a service-based business, you wouldn't. If you're going to do any sort of resale or retail, then you would have to, but.
Do. So, how about the guy that wants to sell his car on the, on the corner of West Street and Railroad?
No. Well, see, we're kind of branching off out of there. Let's stick to the business licensing on this. The sales tax, as far as actually getting into the self-collect, that's, we can touch on that a bit, but we're not going to, going to trap off on that if we, if we can. That'll be something that we bring up if that's the direction that council decides or that we go, just?
Okay.
Don't get into that.
I, I also want to inform you that the investigator or whatever you wish to call him, the files of the accountant are locked by the IRS Code Section 230 unless the taxpayer is present.
Duly noted, and we will address that once sales tax collection comes. Thank you, Mr. French, we appreciate it. Connie? Ms. Musgrave?
Good evening, Connie Musgrave, general accountant for the city. Actually, the business license and sales tax license modules are married together. You can have the business license by itself and just have it, but it, the sales tax uses the same database.
You're, you're getting married together in the software?
Yeah.
They're not married together?
So, when we were starting the business license, we went into the software and the software gives the business license a number. We were going to use the same number if we were going into self-collect for that sales tax license number. So you would only fill out the paperwork for the license one time. And on the license, it would state retail, taxable, sales tax, or exempt. But the reason to get these businesses licensed is so that we know what is out there. If a business has been denied, we can put that in the database and then a couple of years down the road, you don't have to look through files and say, oh, why were they denied? It will be in the software. You can have violations in there and they can look them up, not just the person who's in charge of that, but another department, say, the city clerk, can look at it also and see what is on that business license. The business license, it's kind of a way to find out what is out in our community, what type of businesses we have out there, what type of incentives we've given to each business will be noted in there. It's just information that the city can use. Any questions?
So, no, just clarification, the, the software is what will utilize both if you have a business license and you have a sales tax, retail, state license.
It'll be the same.
It would be the same.
And that's why we went with what the state says is every other year renewal, because we did not want businesses have to fill it out every year or another year, or fill out two forms if they're retail. It'll be the same one.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Connie.
How's council doing this evening?
Awesome.
To be determined.
First off, I want to say that I am very much in favor of a business license for the entire city. I am back behind at 100% and I think it's been something that's been needed for some time. In fact, I am not representing the brush chamber tonight, but I am on the board of the chamber. I am an executive board member and I am one of those that is pushing brush to try to get a business license. Having said that, I'm going to try to move very quickly because I do have a lot of notations here. But I do think that there are some things that we need to be very cognizant of and really think about before we do, at least this current iteration that we have. Number one, I believe that all sales tax information from this current reading should be stricken 100%. The city currently does not collect their own sales tax. The only thing, if you want to put anything in here that the city could possibly do, is check with the state to make sure that their sales tax license is valid. End of story. The city has no way of knowing how much is to be recorded, how much is owed, how far behind they are. That is information that is held by the state. I am sure that if the city does decide to self-collect sales tax, there are a myriad of these issues that are going to be involved with that. So if the city wants to, as it states several times in here, and I'm going to try to skip every time that it's in here, but this is obviously very, very, very geared towards sales tax, and the city's not even doing it at the moment. As a business, if they are working with the state currently to remediate that issue, how can the city have the right of revoking the ability for that business to do business when they're currently working with the state to remediate that issue? You've just put a huge burden on that business. They are already in violation of continuing to do business through the state itself. I'm glad to see Section A, the two things that I want to point out in there, because Mrs. Williams did state that this could be pared down, a couple of things that I want to point out in here to either remove completely or look at when you are pairing this down, is that even demonstration of products. So in other words, a business in this community, I might reach out to somebody on the front range, or Denver, or Wyoming, or Nebraska, to come in and show me a product. What this is stating is that they must have a license to even come in and demonstrate that product to me.
No. I have, I work at La Prino, I'm the buyer at La Prino. I have people come in and demonstrate things to me weekly.
Yes.
Not one of them has a city count, city sales tax license.
I agree, but sir, have you read this?
Which part, what are you?
It is section, we are 5, 120a, number 2. Since one or more employees, agents, commissioned salespersons into the city to solicit business or to solve, assemble, repair, service assist in the use of products, or for demonstration or other reasons. Is that not what that states, sir? I agree with you. Now do you see my concern?
Well, then, let's delete that, but.
I just want to call that out. I also want to call out Section 5- I also want to call out Section 5. Makes more than one delivery into the city within a 12-month period by means other than common carrier. A, what is common carrier? B, are we going to start oversight on Cargill and all the individual haulers of cattle into Cargill? I do believe that Cargill is in city limits. That would mean that every cattle hauler bringing into Cargill that is an independent owner-operator would have to get a business license. Okay? If we go to 5140A1, all applicable provisions of the city code and state statutes. I do not, I did not mark out all of these, but I would throw caution that somebody needs to go back and reread anytime we say city code and state statutes, because there are a number of times that it's city code or state statutes, which I believe leaves a lot of ambiguity there on which one are you pertaining to. I counted four. Again, I'm sorry, I did not mark all of them. Number 51, 5140A3, really my only concern here, and I think some very simple verbiage would be able to handle this, but the way, and I've got one other section in here as well, I believe the way to handle this is make sure that it's understood that there are some grandfather clauses that are included here. Because the way this reads to me is, I have to renew my license every two years. The way this reads to me is every two years, it's basically a new license. Therefore, if there are ordinances or statutes that have changed from the previous year of me conducting business, and now two years later, I'm having to meet the new standards and ordinances. It's very possible that my business isn't even accepted anymore with an new ordinance, but I'm grandfathered in as of today. Can we see? Okay. 5150A1, I believe that that needs to be changed to the, whatever the Secretary of State, legal trade name of the business is. If you are a corporation, there should be no name of an individual attached to that. You can have a board of directors, you can have other things, but an individual's name is not a corporation. A corporation is a living entity of itself. So, I think there needs to be accounting for that. I do believe that 5150A5 is a little ambiguous, is any other information deemed necessary by the city clerk. I believe that maybe if there is additional information that the city or the council feels does need to be acquired, that there can be an amendment to the ordinance in order to define that. But leaving it open and book on whatever they feel deemed necessary is a little ambiguous there. 5150AC, fantastic in getting rid of that entire paragraph, but the very first sentence is one of the most concerning to me, in the fact that the state even allows for a liquor license to be transferred to another individual with the sale of a property. You shake your head no?
You keep talking.
Okay. I did read that on their site today. There is a process to go through that. Don't get me wrong. You can't just simply sign a deal, but there is a process to transfer a liquor license to another individual or entity's name. In the same area here, if I decide to move my business, I could be over here in the Colonial Building and be in Suite A, and all of a sudden, I'm going to move over to Suite B because it's now free, and it's a bigger office space, and I'm going to pay more rent. I now have to get a new business license because my address changes. So, again, I think there are some things there that we need to keep, think about.
Okay.
The exemption of every two years, I do think that that's something that should be kept in consideration, considering the fact that the U.S. Postal Service has 579, and you can look this up on the Postal Service site, commercial addresses within the city limits of Fort Morgan. If we start taking that there are many people within possibly those, such as real estate agents, brokers, other things that may need to get those licenses, I believe that we're probably putting a fairly large burden in a one-month, two-month period on the clerk's office to renew potentially 1,000, 1,500 business licenses, not accounting for growth over the years as well. So, maybe this is something you might want to look at, and whenever you sign up, then it expires two years from date, so that you're spreading that burden across and not burning down your clerk's office during the Christmas and holiday season. Might be something to consider.
The idea of that was because state sales tax licenses are good for two years and all expire at the end of every odd-numbered year.
I understand that. I would also say that the state has much greater resources than our city does.
Yeah, that kind of goes without saying.
Yeah.[924.13][924.13](Laughter). So, I'm actually trying to look up for the city clerk on that one.
Okay.
Several other places within here, we are referencing exceptions or something to other areas. I can tell you that the cancellation of business license shall cease operations until the license is reinstated, renewed, or other license. But yet, if we go to, I've gotten off of my notes, there is another section here. I'd have to find it, but it is saying that within 20 days, which could be the day after receiving this, if you file for a hearing, then your license is not suspended, revoked, or canceled until the remediation of that decision from that hearing. So, I do think that, full disclosure, it needs to be stated in there, that there is no definitive answer right there, that there is remediation beyond that.
Okay.
May I continue? Okay.
Let's wrap it up in case there are others that wish to speak.
Yeah, I'm trying. The city clerk may nominate any, anybody, and I really have an issue with the fact that the city clerk is the one that can revoke that license, but yet that is also the only person that you have remediation to in a hearing. Because even though the city clerk can't assign someone to listen, it directly states in here that that person is going to take the information that they heard in the hearing, give it to the city clerk, and then he makes final decision. You're putting an awful lot of power in one person's hands. Later on in Section 6, which I won't get over to that section to, you know, other people be able to make comments and stuff, but there is a, in Section 6, and I believe it needs to be included here, remediation for Section 5, that the Colorado, I don't remember the full thing, due's in process, Rule 106, Section 4, or A4, does state that, I believe, having the hearing in front of the city clerk or an appointed officer of his, that there is additional remediation to the state or in a court based on Rule 106A4, and that that should be mentioned in there as well. The only other thing that I'm going to touch on, Section 6, one area, I think that some of the things that you guys have mentioned in order to correct are 100% in the right direction. I would like to call out that it's interesting that in 5610, under definitions, you have a non-resident vendor, a peddler, and a solicitor, but we never mentioned a resident vendor. There is a whole class of people there that we're missing 100%. I would caution also on the idea of saying a blanket statement of nonprofit, because nonprofit would also include government, because they are a nonprofit entity. And so, when we are having city events downtown, like we did all summer long, and now all of a sudden, the vendors that are going to be making money and that we're bringing in up and down the public streets, those people are not, now have to get a business license because that, they're not within these definitions. Or if we exempt nonprofits completely, again, we're having an entire class of people that could be quite a bit of revenue and/or oversight that's not getting that. Council, thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you for your input. Very informative. Any other public comments?
Good evening. My name is Brian Erdelis. I live at 123 Cheyenne Street. I believe I'm speaking in behalf of the Realtors, I've been told. So, if someone want to come up, they can, but I'll try to make it as brief as I can. The first thing about this was the ordinance was read last Tuesday. I was reading it, and some of the verbiage is what kind of raised a red flag. I shared it with a lot of the brokers, bankers, appraisers, and they gave different feedback, and I believe they touched out to different councilmen, et cetera. One quick question I have for Nina, when she was going through what's going to be taken off, so I don't touch on this if I don't need to, was in Section 5, Section 5-1-50 licensees, you're going to remove where the city department tax can go through if business merges? Were you going to remove that?
Yes, I just want to make a point of process to the mayor. For public comment, usually if, I think we should take all public comment, and then I'll address questions, just so it doesn't go the back and forth. That's usually how we operate, but only if you agree. But for this one, I'll just state that I was clear that just C, we're keeping the first sentence and deleting everything else.
Okay. So, there's some stuff that I don't have to touch on. Anyways, it made me ask the question to John Brennan at first, is like, will all Realtors in town have to register? Will Realtors from out of town have to come in and start registering before they start showing a house, listing a house? And John's answer was, everybody doing business in the city of Fort Morgan, or if you have an office. So, then I led to more questions. I'm like, will city, I'm sorry, home inspectors, somebody who's going to dig a hole and install my post for a sign, just a whole broad of questions. Anyways, they got back to me, they didn't answer all my questions, but they did eventually get back to me. One of the things here is that, and I did reach out to our city council, I emailed them each twice, Doug, Ron returned mine, Kevin sent me back an email. I'm sorry, yeah, he sent me an email, and I haven't heard back from anybody else. But one of the questions I did ask city council was, 1, 2, 3, the fourth, whereas, it says the city council of the city of Fort Morgan has determined that this is the best interest of the city's residents, business, and customers, to establish a formal business registration and licensing program. And one of my questions was, did you all agree on this statement together? And did you guys have a huge influx of people complaining to you? Businesses, citizens, anybody were complaining to you? And nobody got back to me in answer to that question. The other thing as well is that I asked, did you guys write this? And Kevin Lindell did reply to me and said, no, we didn't participate in writing the ordinance, that's why we have attorneys. So, that leads into some other questions. But basically, quickly, Jeff Wilson with Nina's firm did reply to a lot of my emails, and some of his questions and answers were, as far as, do all Realtors in the city of Fort Morgan doing business that live here, have an office, have to register? And the answer was yes. Do outside Realtors coming in have to register? The answer was no. Do appraisers living in the city of Fort Morgan have to register? The answer was yes. Do the city, do appraisers coming in from out of town have to register? The answer was yes. One of my questions was, I was not answered, is why do appraisers have to register when they come in from the city, and Realtors do not? Can you guys answer that for me this evening?
I do not. I didn't write it. I don't have an answer for that.
Okay. That was an answer from Jeff. And then Jeff's emails that you guys have for me.
I believe the distinction that Jeff was making was that if you are simply coming into town with a buyer and showing them houses in Fort Morgan, you wouldn't need to have a license.
Right.
But somebody digging a hole for your sign would have a contractor's license, presumably.
Right. So, but my question was not about the hole digger, it was about an appraiser. So, an appraiser coming in from out of town would have to register. A Realtor coming in from out of town showing or listing a home would not have to register. So, why would one have to register and the other not?
The appraiser is doing a transaction, I guess.
Well, what is the Realtor from out of town doing?
Showing houses.
But he's still making a commission and getting paid.
Mr. Mayor, just to reiterate, if, and this is not to be obnoxious, just for the process, if you agree, the public comment is public comment. You make your public comment for three minutes, and then we will address everyone's question either after the question or after the whole public comment, because otherwise, it's not fair. I didn't answer the last gentleman. I wrote down his notes. Public comment is just public comment, and then we'll answer at the discretion of the council.
All right, that's fair.
Good point.
Home inspectors do have to register with the city. The post hole digger would have to. I'm just going through quickly. One of my other questions was part of the ordinance in regards to legislative intent for owns, leases, rents, or otherwise exercises control over real or personal property within the city, or, goes on to number five, has to register with the city. One of my questions was, does every person have to register, say they have several properties, they have to register their LLCs, their corporations, or averted they hold deed? The answer was no. But if you read this, it states that they would have to. So, I'm not going to get an answer on that one right now.
Section is that specifically?
Legislative intent, A, number four.
5-1-
Section 5-1-20, scope of chapter, A legislative intent, number four. And then, really briefly, just going through, so... My question was, so, I did have a question, other questions that you can answer later this evening, was, why was it brokers, the Realtors, not the appraisers? How are we making these definitions? Do attorneys, when they come into town, such as your firm, Ms. Williams, will they have to register when they come to town and do business? Will a doctor, a dentist, a hospital, La Prino, Con Agra, Viero, do all these businesses have to register and be held to the same standards as a small business? And that is all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
How are we doing? I appreciate you yielding your time to me for a few moments. Some of the topics have already been addressed, there's a few others that haven't been addressed.
Then let's hit the ones that haven't been addressed.
Yes, please.
Can you start by telling us who you are?
Derek Hawkins.
Okay.
Yeah. Section 51120, scope of the chapter, the intent, this is pretty open-ended in a lot of areas. Delivery people. Somebody comes in from Home Depot, do they have to register? As a notified business in the city of Fort Morgan. We're selecting out certain businesses. People that own multiple rental properties, as Brian said, they have an LLC, they have an S Corporation, they're registered with the Colorado Secretary of State, are they going to have to reregister in the city of Fort Morgan and pay additional fees? The verbiage is too vague, and I think there's a lot of things that need to be re-discussed, reevaluated. Moving on to, I'm just going to hit one other subject here. The city clerk is pretty much responsible for administrating all of this, unless you are a outside resident, and then it appears that in Section 630, everything is to be done through the city manager. I don't know how that is a wise decision to do, nor does it allow the city clerk to put it into their database immediately. If the city clerk's pretty much responsible for everything, why would the city manager be the one to perform that task?
Are you talking 5-6-30?
5-6-30, I think that needs to be struck, and it all needs to be handled by the city Non-resident vendors or peddlers. Somebody soliciting at Walmart, I need gas, they have to be licensed. A lot of Title 39, section, or Article 20- Title thirty-nine, section, or article twenty-six has to do with taxes by the Colorado State statute. It has to be initiated by the city manager, which we kind of established, that's where this started at, and then went to the attorney for drafting. But it also points the finger at the city council for everything that's in here.
We haven't passed it yet.
Yeah, you haven't passed it yet, but your name's all over it when you read this, that it all came from the city council, it was initiated by the city council. I don't think that's factual. And I guess bottom line, when it comes right down to it, the city manager has been responsible for the enforcement of the prior ordinance, charter five, the municipal code.
Right.
That we know hasn't been enforced, which is kind of a dereliction of duty, in my opinion. So with that, I think I'll let the floor be yielded to the other.
Okay, thank you, Derek.
I'm going to get my two cents.
I've got a couple of questions to start with. What's the enforcement mechanism? I mean, if somebody's license is revoked, how do you enforce it?
Okay, next question.
When did this renewal on the city license, when did that go in fact? You know what year that was?
Renewal?
As far as you have to renew your city license every so often?
The current one or the old one?
The old one.
The old one?
The old one was 2010.
2010?
And that was.
When the whole code was reorganized, that's not necessarily the date of that ordinance.
Okay, because, I started over thirty years ago, and when I got my city sales tax license, that I still hang on my wall, it was not a renewed thing, it was, you got it when you went into business, and that was it. So, my grandfather.
Are you talking about a sales tax license?
It was a city sales tax license.
That's separate from a business license.
But it was your business license at that time, thirty something years ago. That's what you had to come in the city to get. That's all they gave you, and it was supposed to be forever, as long as you're in business.
I think that's what Derek was touching on.
Okay. Like I said, everything I heard tonight, there's a lot of good comments, I could sit here and go all night with all the, getting into the weeds of this, and it's a mess. I mean, how do I deal with my subcontractors that come into my business? Do each one of them have to come in and get a license?
She's taking all the questions, we're not avoiding your questions.
Okay. My concern, if that is true, I already struggle to get subcontractors for the, anything, Claire bra, window tinning, glass, you name it, it's hard to get a good subcontractor. And then when you tell them, hey, you're going to have to go to the city, register, they're going to say, oh, screw you. And I think it's going to make it harder on business, you're putting a harder burden. Another question I have, if I'm doing, if the city sales tax being collected by the city goes through, okay, and this is, you've got to get this in place to get that, and if that's your goal, do, is it a separate form? I collect for the city and I write a check to you guys, plus I'm doing the state too? Separately?
Don't know, I have the same question.
Okay, that seems like another burden on my business, that's already hard enough to keep up with the paperwork and regulations that are already on books. This is just one more step that, you know, if I had a choice, would I want to be in the city, or would I go out in the county and start a business? And if it's going to be hard to start a business in the city, and it looks easier in the county, I think most people will go that direction. I think we've seen a lot of that in the past. Wrap it up, I think it's a really, really bad idea. And I think you should table it until we've put some thought in it, because I really don't have a problem that the city has my business on file, that I do business here. And, I mean, the police department has that information, the utility department has that information already. You know, I don't have a problem with having to register, but the enforcement, I've got some big issues on that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, last. Anybody else?
Can I say one more thing? I forgot.
No. Make it quick.
I have four emails.
But they were not against it, I just wanted to say their names. Kevin Average, William Bunting, whoops, Don Jones was one of them, and property owner Joe Klein were also on there against it. Just wanted to read their names.
I received phone calls from all of them. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Blake Barry, I live at three two three Lake Street. I own a handful of rental properties, I'm in the process of starting a small business that's actually my exit plan out of the oil field. I drive up to Denver every day, it's miserable, I hate it. I would like to approach this maybe from, from a less specific perspective, and maybe a little bit more general. I do agree with the last gentleman who spoke. As I'm looking at starting a small business in this town, I'm seeing this as more red tape, more questions that need to be answered, more things that make it less attractive to me. Somebody like myself, I'm, I'm not specifically established, my daughter sitting right there, she's, she's a fourth generation inhabitant of this county, but, but yet, we're not stuck here, we're able to go other places, and if I can go somewhere that is very easy, that doesn't have, for lack of a better term, I'll use it again, red tape, I have to think about that, I have to consider that. That's not my wish, that's not my desire. I love this town, my wife, R.W. Daniel, you all know him, he's the locksmith, that's my wife's father. One of the things with legislation that we have to look at, and we comment about it all the time, on a federal level, is the unintended consequences of what we're doing. We don't realize it right now, but we see how things grow, what they become after they've taken on their own life. Forgive me, I'm going to, I'm going to speak a little bit firmly here, but to say that you don't know what's written in that because you didn't write it, is really a difficult thing for me to swallow. You guys are our appointed representatives, like, we look to you guys to look out for our best interests. So, when it comes to thinking about the future of something like this, could I picture a world very easily where the city clerk says, oh man, this thing is, you know, enormous, this is growing, we need three new employees, we're going to have to start charging a hundred bucks apiece for these licenses in order to cover that cost? I don't think that's a far stretch at all, to think about, goodness, I mean, who knows? I mean, that's the problem with unintended consequences. We can't picture the future, we don't know what's going to happen, but nevertheless, we all know that it does come. The future will eventually be here, and we have to deal with the fallout of that. So I would just encourage you all, as you're going through this, first, the gentleman that spoke second, I feel would be a phenomenal resource. I think you all feel that same way. He had some, some amazing comments that, wow, I mean, I'm opposed to it, but yet, I mean, he has some phenomenal things to say. Ma'am, I watched you shaking your head in opposition to a lot of the things that he was saying, and I don't know, maybe you weren't aware of your, your body language, but I really do feel like he would be a great person to consult on this. I appreciate your time, thank you very much, I apologize for speaking strongly.
Okay. Thank you, Blake. Can you sign in so we know who you are? Please, Mr. Becker.
Please, there's even a please. Good evening. First of all, John Becker, seventeen two seven two, County Road P., representing myself as a business owner and another employee of one of your larger businesses in the city of Fort Morgan. Became aware of this as I was heading out on a trip, so I'm not as versed as some on this, but, and I don't want to go back over everything else, but what I would tell you is, your policy that you've written here, and I know you guys didn't write it, but we should be well aware of what we're, what we're looking at, is almost unenforceable. And I'll tell you, as you go through A, just on that first page that went through, so five, one dash twenty A, you essentially include everybody that's coming in here, and I know that La Prino said something about the vendors that come in, but you've essentially included all those vendors that come in and talk to businesses, and say that they would have to cease business if they essentially were caught in violation of this. First of all, there's no way, you can't enforce that. What you'll force us to do is move off premises and do business away from the city of Fort Morgan, if that's what you want. And we're more than willing to do that, but why would you want that? Number two, you say, essentially, any piece of personal property that's owned inside of the city, I have to register, if that's for the purpose of business. How would you even follow that or enforce it? That is a large government entity that you're talking about with this policy. The other problem that I have with the policy, as we see with any government entity, as we add more regulation, you always say, there's no more fees. There's not a fee. Well, I would tell you that if I was a citizen of the city of Fort Morgan, I am not, I'm a city, I'm a citizen of the county, but I would not think a citizen, or as a business owner here, I would want you to grow government when you just asked for a sales tax to cover your roads. You can't cover your expenses now, and you want to bring on another expense with this. The third problem that I have is that when we pass regulation like this, we'd always like to bring in the stakeholders, and we'd like to bring them in somewhat throughout the process to say yea or nay to what's going on. What I would ask as you go through this, don't punish the brick and mortar businesses, because essentially that's what you're doing, because the rest of them, I don't know how you would even enforce it. But, brick and mortar, you could. Bring them into this process, go through it, see what you need and what you're after. I don't believe it's for economic development, I believe it is for a fee, and to get you started on sales tax, which I understand, there's other businesses or other counties that are, cities that do it. I would say that this goes way too far. And I would say the same thing that I would tell you when we were at the Capitol, don't make a bad bill better, scrap it, start talking to your businesses, and let's come up with something that's agreeable, that keeps the atmosphere in Morg, or in the city of Fort Morgan with certainty, because this creates uncertainty. You can tell me in two years, for no reason, it states in here, for no reason, you don't really have to have a reason, you can cancel my business license. How does that create any certainty for me to want to stay here? It doesn't do that. This creates no welcome to Fort Morgan atmosphere that I can see. And I think that's what you're trying to create, something to help with economic development, to assure that we're using businesses here. The fourth thing, I still don't understand why, if I own buildings, such as the gentleman that does rentals, and I own commercial buildings here, why do we need to register? We have businesses within them, yeah, sure, I pay property taxes, I don't want more regulation to go out. My property taxes on commercial already are astounding. I don't need any more red tape on them. Please, go after what you're looking for. If you're looking to start a sales tax, those are those businesses that create sales tax. You say it's service businesses too? Well, if I own a service business outside of town, I don't have to register, I come in and do the same business. But if I'm in town, you punish me and say, I have to go in and register? What I would say is, start over. Bring together the stakeholders, bring something that makes sense, that creates certainty in the city of Fort Morgan, that doesn't push business out. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Becker. Any other comments? Last call. If there's no one else, I would ask the city clerk if any oral or written comments were submitted to the clerk's office prior to this hearing.
Yes, Your Honor, I did receive one emailed letter this afternoon, which I provided copies to each of the council members and the media. I'll just quickly summarize that, it's from Kevin Avirch. He says he grew up in Fort Morgan and owns a business that conducts business here, he's witnesses the changes over the years, and recalls the time when small business thrived along Main Street. Over time, large business came in and started to change the way we shop and do business. Today, many businesses struggle to keep up, and result is Main Street, empty storefronts, and businesses that struggle to get people to come in the front door. Store owners spend more time now than ever before trying to navigate licenses, permits, and city ordinances. Proposed city ordinance twelve thirty-six creates yet one more hurdle, it's another step of bureaucracy. Ask yourself, does this promote new business today? Though I can't be at this meeting in person, look around at those who are expressing concern, these are our city's small business owners, they are here to tell you this is a bad idea today. I would propose concentrate efforts on attracting and retaining the city's small businesses, find ways to fill Main Street with thriving businesses that employ people in our community, and when our business community is healthy, strong, and thriving, we can at that time
Council discussion, is there any questions or comments from council?
Do we want to get answers to some of the questions?
Well, we'll address all those once we go through council, and if we need, we'll answer all of those. For me, it would appear that, at the minimum, we need to go through everything and take out everything that we've been talking about and everything, and have it republished, and then it also seems to me that, prior to publishing it and coming up with it, that, as was suggested, and what I'd thought about before, because I've received some of my comments, that we need to maybe have a forum with input from business owners or something, you know, offer a forum to get additional input from that standpoint. It seems like that this is one of those catch-22s, as far as, I think all we truly want and everything is a business registry, but to try and make it complete, you start opening all these other doors and quagmires and everything, and all of a sudden, then, as everybody has pointed out, all of a sudden you have conflicting areas and areas of apprehension with business owners. And, of course, you know, our goal has always been to try and make Fort Morgan business-friendly to attract new business to Fort Morgan, and to not only do that, but at the same time, be highly aware that we want to do everything we can to help and keep the businesses in Fort Morgan that are already established here. And so, I think that this, although we did not recognize from the beginning, has the opportunity to impede both of those, so I think we really need to, at minimum, rework it.
Okay. Clint?
Just kind of listening to everybody and kind of reading over these things, I got several emails and several phone calls about this topic. With everything being taken out tonight, I mean, we rattled off a bunch of numbers and a bunch of letters, I think we need to republish it, at least to clarify all the things that were taken out, so that everyone's on the same page. I still think we're rushing this a little bit too fast, and it needs to be, go through with a finer tooth comb, and to make sure. with a finer-tooth comb, and to make sure that everything that we're putting in there is fair to all businesses, all citizens of Fort Morgan, just so that we can make sure everything's done correctly, because it's those unintended consequences down the road that's like, well, we meant this to be common sense, and that's always a dangerous word in today's society, is that common sense. So, I think we need to table this tonight, and not vote on this and not move forward, but really just kind of, really put in the work, make sure we get what we're wanting to and what we intended to, when we said this is something we want to do.
David?
Well, I just have one question. I was doing a little research in the last couple of days on other cities that have business licensing. And I agree, we need to look at the details, we need to clear some things up, no doubt. But if it's such a bad idea, why is virtually every city in the state of Colorado have a business licensing procedure in place? If you look up and down the front range, virtually every single municipal --
Comment?
-- we reach just 20 bucks.
Okay.
Is that going to kill you? It's been 20 bucks for 10 years.
We're not getting into debate, just give your comments, please.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm just asking the question. So, thank you.
Afford him his time. Thank you. Doug?
You know, instead of beating the horse up some more, I agree, I think we've reached too much, and I like the idea of Mr. Becker. We've got great resources here, and what the city's after and what you're after, I think this can work out just fine, we just need common sense communication.
Lisa?
I would just, I would reiterate a lot of what Clint said. I think the intent was not met. We aimed at a target, and we totally missed a target. We, as a council, missed the mark by not engaging in the community. I mean, that is clear, the number of phone calls, the number of emails, the number of people. And I want to thank every person that took them out of your busy lives, every one of you has very busy lives, and to have you show up for this means a lot. And I think we absolutely need to take a step back, we need to look at what are we really trying to accomplish here? We need to be, make sure it's very transparent, we're getting the people, you know, the gentleman back here that went through this with a fine-tooth comb and could tell me exactly, those are the kind of people, everyone in here. If you want to be part of the solution, then I think we need to step back, form a committee, get people that are invested, that want to see small business grow, that want to see our community grow, and figure out how we do that, but how we do that collaboratively, and, you know, transparently, and making sure everybody's voice is heard. So, I would 100% agree that this absolutely needs to be tabled until we're able to make sure we've covered all the bases and put the target part.
Okay. I've got a couple comments, and that. If the intent is for business licensing, to have a current record of what businesses are established in our community, we'd need something of that nature. We currently have one on the books that requires a renewal. Mr. Merkin's brought up the comment that hasn't been enforced and kind of dereliction of duty, and he hit it on the head. I got a business license in 2015 with no expiration date on that, so the ones that have come in and got it in the past, they've moved out of town, so we really don't have a valid date doing that. I have one question of what would be the benefits of self-collecting sales tax? I know one of them is, we get it sooner, as opposed to a six-week delay or something along that lines in there. What else is the benefit to that?
Generally, communities that transfer and start doing self-collect see a larger increase in the number of people who are actually remitting sales tax. Another benefit to businesses, which I think is most important, because our focus, as Kevin said, is to be business-friendly and support businesses, we rely on the state to come out and do the audits and take care of the tax issues. We see them come out once a year, pick a handful of people, do an audit, and then do their thing. And every three years, they come out and do a larger canvassing, and they do that intentionally because it's a three-year cycle, you can go back three years and look at somebody's taxes and say, "Okay, you haven't paid in the last three years, we're going to come after you." And we've had some issues with some businesses in the past where the state will come out and do an audit, and they'll say, "Well, you're three years behind, and you have three years of penalties, and you have three years of problems." And, yeah, no, we didn't have a responsibility to notify you that you might be doing something wrong, nothing came up to show that it was wrong. And so, you've got small businesses that have been hit by the state collecting our sales tax as well as their own, and it's affected their ability to operate, and we've had businesses, you know, go under. And I think, when you look at what is that benefit to a small business to have self-collect, where you've got somebody locally who's looking at those returns regularly and saying, "Okay, something doesn't seem right here, how can we help this business?" Understand, if they're meeting the requirements of the self-collect, I think that's probably one of the biggest benefits to businesses, is that they have customer service in Fort Morgan to address the issues as it relates to city sales taxes. Right now, they have to rely upon the Department of Revenue and the state of Colorado.
Okay. But it also creates a burden, because you've got to now submit your state and sales tax, then you've got to submit also to the city. The state is still going to come out and do their audits on everything in the city to collect their taxes and that. I guess my point is, I don't know that, you know, we've seen a continuous uptick in our sales tax portion. So I don't think that that is a real issue, that we've got the business licensing and the sales tax merging together and becoming a cohesive part of what we're trying to do. Going in, I would just assume, I've always been and will be, small government. Big government doesn't work. I would rather have the state come in and go to some of the citizens, or the business, and want to look at their books, as opposed to the city of Fort Morgan going into Mr. Linkers or them and saying, "We want to audit your books, we want to check you." To me, that is small government overreaching or getting larger. I think that sets out the business licensing portion and having an idea of what that is. Like I said, we already have this on as part of our municipal code. It's passed. It needs to be utilized and enforced. It says that we will number our business licenses, they will be renewed, it covers all the other stuff, it even goes into adult entertainment stuff and that. So, you know, a lot of comments that were made, and Mr. Becker with the enforcement side of things, brings up a lot of very valid points. So I think we've kind of really outreached what this has done. I read it when it first came out, and I had some concerns with it as well. And I think a lot of what we've heard tonight and what we've seen is that what is before us tonight is too much, too big, we're not Wheat Ridge, we're not there. The intent for business licensing is a need that we have. However, I just, I think we need to just go back, enforce what we have, take a step back and consider is self-collect sales tax something that we really want to get into. And I concur with the others that, you know, we need to set this aside, table it, remove it, move on, but I have no desire to take action on this, and I...
Your Honor, can I make a suggestion?
You may.
We could table this, but given the amount of dissatisfaction with it, it could be on the table for a long time. You do have the option of voting it down, and we'd be rid of it, and then we could start over that way.
Okay. Well, like I said, I would abolish this and utilize what we currently have, which, if it's enforced the way it is, may meet our needs for establishing the database. Those are my thoughts. So, are there any other comments or questions from council? If there are none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing or continue.
Your Honor, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. I have a motion by Lisa Northrup, and a second by Kevin Lindell, all in favor. Aye. Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Ms. Williams.
Yes, possible council actions or options on this are to approve the ordinance, approve the ordinance with changes, vote the ordinance down, continue to adjourn or table and republish at a later time.
Ms. Williams, what would the proper wording be if we were to vote the ordinance down?
Mr. Clerk, would you rather them vote for it and then vote against it, or should they just vote, move to remove it? How would you rather that for your...
I would say they would offer a resolution to disapprove.
Disapprove, yeah.
Just didn't know what the right D-word was. I knew it was a D-word, just didn't know which D-word.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would make a resolution that we disapprove ordinance number 1236, amending the Fort Morgan Municipal Code to implement a business licensing program, and do we have to publish by title?
Second.
I don't think publication is required if it fails on second reading.
No, I don't think so. But, that's fine, you can change that.
So it is to abolish what is...
Disapprove.
Disapprove, okay.
I believe Mr. Lindell seconded that.
He did.
Vote yes to disapprove.
Yeah, what is the correct...
Who seconded that? Kevin?
Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously, the ordinance 1236 dies.
I want to thank everybody for your input and your time and interest in this. What's that? So, thank you.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
We're not done. He can't...
Yeah, you guys all got to stay, we're not done yet.
We've got several hours to go. We haven't got to the budget yet.
Bye, sweet girl. See you tomorrow.
His cousin is a real estate agent, but he always says, "Worth is black."
Oh, that's funny. There's a white hat.
And everything, so...
I don't know.
Not your cup of tea?
No.
She's going to her power supply, she'll be...
That's great.
Yes. So, we'll get that.
Next agenda on the item is a presentation and possible action on the first reading of ordinance 1237, establishing an overlay district for the downtown area, and request to schedule a public hearing on the ordinance for October 1st. Mr. Wells and Mr. Glamire.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll go ahead and get started with this, and I want to thank Steve and Sarah as well for assisting with several public meetings, and I want to thank the downtown businesses who are very much engaged in this process and helped us to come up with what we've got today. I think there's still some additional things that we need to address and go over with regard to what's being proposed, but just to give you a general outline of what we're looking at to approve and to deny in the downtown area, it's fairly simple. After listening to everybody and taking different types of surveys and getting information is that the downtown corridor, or this overlay district, should not allow any residential uses on front-facing first-floor businesses in the downtown area. And so, what we're looking at today is to do this overlay district that will disallow that use in the Main Street area. I think what's going to be of most importance tonight, as we look at what to pass, I think the language and what we're proposing be allowed and not allowed was fairly unambiguous among the participants in the meetings. The one issue that is still up in the air a little bit is what are the boundaries of the district? Currently, and what we've put into the packet for your consideration tonight is a boundary, and it's black and white, and you see it there, and the boundary would basically be from alley to alley behind Main Street, so Main Street and the buildings that go to the alley on the east and west, and on the north and the south, you would have Platte Avenue and Railroad. We had various things to look at and areas to go, but that's kind of what we came up with based upon some comments that we had from businesses. I know that we've had other comments and some other concerns, that maybe the district should be larger and incorporate more areas. When we did that process of looking at how big it would be, there were various uses on State Street and End Sign that would have to be, if put into the current code reading, would be disallowed unless, except by use by special review, for example, a church. And if you extend the boundaries that far, you encompass the Methodist Church that's on the corner of State Street and Bijou. So, that's part of the reason why it got smashed down to alley to alley, and then there was some discussion by some businesses on South Main, south of Railroad, specific business owners and property owners that did not want the district to go into that area. So, with that, I think what we've got for your consideration tonight is an ordinance that reflects what the public input was with some specific questions as it relates to what is the boundary and what should it be. And so, I guess we're ready to, I guess, have any questions that council might have. We have a lot of individuals here tonight who were involved with the public meetings that may also want to provide some perspective to council on what we're trying to do with this ordinance, and while it's not set for a public hearing, it would be within the discretion of the mayor to allow people to come up and make comments with regard to what we've done so far.
After our last one, I want public input. So, does council have any questions or comments regarding the proposed overlay on the downtown district?
Your Honor, could we wait for the public comments and then ask...
Then you want to be in favor of that? Okay. Is there anybody that would like to talk regarding the overlay that was involved with the...
She remembered to sign in from the last one.
I guess my biggest concern on the way they cut the overlay down, when we voted on it, and I may remember wrong, I thought we voted on, there were two of them that were within a couple of numbers of each other, and this one was the lower of the three. But, again, consequences. If we take out the parking right now, if somebody sometime comes in and the parking lots that are right behind me and wants to develop them and put in apartment buildings or whatever, you're now taking away even more of our parking space and everything else. So this is all consequences that people aren't thinking about. It's not that we want to tell everybody, "You need to do this," or "You need to do that," but that special permit that they can get, they can still put it in if everybody, you know, you guys look at it and vote on it and say, "That is an okay thing." Now you're cutting out a lot of the businesses, and it's really going to affect the existing businesses. Because... Because we need that parking to get people into our businesses. And it's already hard enough to, I guess, survive down there, that when we start cutting this out and if people start to build behind us and take up, you know, all of that, then it's going to be really hard for us to function and move on. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Marla Stumpf. I live at 440 Sherman Street. And I just want to raise an awareness, and it's not, I don't, it's not an opinion. But I think if you pass something which is so concrete that later on, when you're older or at whatever point, your business is no longer viable, you cannot sell your building, you cannot rent your building, your children don't want to run your business, and no one wants it, what are you going to do? Because you have to pay your taxes, your utilities, your insurance, and whatever, possibly still a mortgage. Now, I believe, you know, a lot of, I understand the, I'm an ex-business owner, I went through this, and I just want people just to think back a little bit. There might be something we pass so buildings are built differently. But if we pass it that there's no residents, and you're all faced at some point with wanting to do something else with your building, you may not be able to. That's all. Thank you.
Right. I think the gist of it is that businesses do not front the retail downtown area. You're still allowed to have them upstairs. Special use permits still will allow it, so it's not basically set in a concrete to limit use for it. It would be the same as what you did with your business converting it. You would have to come in and get a...
I'm sorry. I think they're establishing that no residents on the ground floor.
Facing Main Street is correct.
And that's what I'm saying is, I think we need to be careful with how, this is a very set and concrete thing. And I'm not saying it may be you, it may be anyone in here who may later on...
Come back up if you're going to...
I'm assuming even though it's a different ordinance, my name writes?
Yes, please.
Okay, perfect. Oh, sign in again?
Yeah.
Good evening. Chris Aron, Paramount Technologies. I'm sure you guys are tired of hearing me tonight. Two things. One, it's already been mentioned, but I will say that the ordinance as read does say eastern half of Ensign Street extending to western half of State Street. I agree with that verbiage 100%. This is not alley to alley. It's eastern half of the street to western half of the street. That, one of the biggest challenges that we have as businesses on Main Street is parking, especially parking for our employees and other people when there are many multi-story buildings that have no parking. So if on Ensign and on State, you start allowing apartments and other things, then the public parking that is being taken up by these residences now cause a bigger issue of parking for your downtown businesses. We already run into that with businesses alone. There are several of us that have problems with parking areas. Okay? So I would like to see a map that exhibits what is written, not what is mapped. I do think that there might be, which is funny considering the fact that I did not want a lot of ambiguity on the last one, I do believe that for 24100B42, that we could add some ambiguity there so that if there is something that is not quite so concrete, that might be something that a business wants to move into the downtown area, that we could allow an overriding clause that, hey, this may be a case for a special use, for something that does go up for public comment, for something that council can look at and, you know, decide whether that's appropriate for the downtown area or not. Other than that, I think that for the most part, we've kept it simple, and I'm glad to see that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a clarification so the council and the public are clear on the ordinance?
Yes.
So, the ordinance, in the fifth whereas clause, that delineation of the properties was for the moratorium. On July 2nd, you passed a moratorium, an ordinance 1233, to hold off on residential development in the B1 zoning district for that portion. And that's because the B1 zoning district currently allows residential. So, in, when you put a moratorium in place, it's to understand, to kind of, you know, hear out the public, look at the regulations. And then what is proposed in the ordinance in Exhibit A, the map, that is what is being posed for the new district overlay. So the other parts of that property that were in the moratorium, that would end. And then we say that in Section 3, moratorium, the temporary moratorium, will be lifted upon adoption of this ordinance. So is that clear?
Yes.
Thanks.
So what you're, I just want to make sure, in English language. So, the moratorium went center of Ensign to center of State, correct?
Yes.
This has shrunk that down. It does not say, and it is indicative, it is alley to alley. It's not, it does not encompass though, so what you're saying is that once we approve or we disapprove, the moratorium then goes away, and those businesses that are on the opposite sides of those alleys still have the ability, if they choose, to have front-facing residential properties.
I would say it should be made by council to extend that to center of street to center of street. Not that it's approved yet.
Correct. But I'm just saying...
Well, you're asking for the attorney's explanation of what's going on, right? So, the moratorium was passed for that larger area, and that is in effect for six months or until the passage of a new ordinance. And the current draft of the ordinance in Exhibit A is saying that the district overlay that is speaking to residential on the Main Street or on the frontage is in that Exhibit A, which is alleyway to alleyway, and, you know, it's drawn on the, south of East Platt and north of East Railroad Avenue. And it's, and that's because otherwise, the B1 zoning district allows residential on any floor or any street frontage.
What was the end of the north-south on the moratorium?
Oh, the moratorium. So the moratorium, which is still in effect, is for eastern half of Ensign Street to the western half of State Street, south of Platt Avenue and...
Just north of the railroad tracks.
Just north of the railroad tracks. And just to further clarify, the purpose of a moratorium is a limited purpose and to look into, you know, so it's better to do the broader, look into this, hold, you know, kind of put a pause, timeout, and look at it, and then further clarify it. You'd always want to go larger or the same as you look into the regulation. That's the purpose of a moratorium, is just to give the city council and the city staff and the public time to look at everything.
Thank you.
No other comments? Clint?
Okay. I guess my question would be, is why did we restrict the area from the moratorium to what was shown in Exhibit A?
I, that's for staff. I was given Exhibit.
Yeah, so it was, based upon the comments that we received, we had three different options, right? We showed from what the moratorium area was, and then we did one alley to alley, and then we did one that was kind of like this serpentine thing to try and get the side streets that we kind of consider as Main Street, Bijou, Bijou Beaver, and Kiowa. It was almost evenly split when we did the numbers, except the one that got the least votes was the serpentine number. They said, "We don't like that." The other ones were, like I said, pretty close to where those at. Why we pared it down was the concern about specific churches, that if you look at this ordinance, you'll see that churches are allowed, but they're allowed by a use by special review, meaning they'd have to go through the entire process of making an application to city council. So, for example, the Methodist Church, that's the one we're specifically talking about, burned down many, many years ago and was rebuilt. And the question came up, what happens if the Methodist Church burns down again? Well, the answer is they wouldn't be allowed to rebuild except by use by special review. So they would have to come in, file the application, and go through the process of having it rebuilt. So the idea and the concept was, well, we don't want to necessarily cause problems to uses that are there. We can just exclude those specific uses. So those were the discussion, and that's why it went a bit slower. And I know there were other people at that meeting that may have a different perspective on why we got there, and, you know, there may be different ideas on why we got there. But that's what we're proposing, and it doesn't have to be there tonight. As pointed out, you know, it doesn't have to be what is the exhibit. It can be broader. We also included businesses south of Railroad in the moratorium. The reason why it's not south of Railroad is we have a business person who's here tonight whose businesses were in that and specifically said she did not want anything south of Railroad to be included. So that's, hopefully that answers your question.
So, I have a question. So if, because it seems to be specifically the parking lots that are behind several of the business owners that are sitting out here, could it not happen that I buy one of those parking lots, and I decide that I'm, so I'm not going to put, but I'm going to put apartments up above that, and I could put a daycare by special use permit and still take the parking lot? So, I guess, I understand that. Totally am in support of the importance of parking for downtown businesses, but including that area doesn't guarantee in any alternate universe that you will have that parking. If the Wells Fargo decides to sell that parking lot because they, we know, none of, well, none of us, except for, it doesn't mean one of these things, have any say over what goes in there. I mean, it's their land, it's their ability, I mean, and that wouldn't be front-facing, you know, because they could face it towards, you know, Beaver. And it wouldn't be front-facing in the more current. So I think we have to be very careful that we don't, that we're not keeping those in there so we have parking and at the exclusion of future, I mean, businesses. I mean, we have businesses that, I mean, Rising Up is an example. If Rising Up decided that they wanted to do something and they wanted to put a shelter, if they're included in this, they can't do that. Is that, and I guess I'm just remembering, let me have my...
Absolutely.
And so I think we just have to be very careful. I think where we had the unintended consequences this time around, where we had something that happened that people didn't want to happen, going too broad with this could have the exact opposite effect, and I just don't think that's fair to some of those businesses in that other area. I think a smaller footprint protects the downtown, the true downtown businesses that are in that corridor without potentially excluding other businesses. So, that's my two cents.
So your point on the parking, I want to address first in the fact that a lot of that parking is city-owned property, I do believe, and it's city-governed. So the city would have to sell that and give up the parking for their downtown district, which I think would cause an uproar within itself.
Only one of those, only one of those lots.
What's that?
Only one of those lots is ours.
There's two. One is the one. East and West parking lot.
Okay, true, true. But one of those is prime parking that Wells Fargo could say, you know, "We're not going to do banking anymore."
But that's also private property, and they can do with that whatever they want. I think that the other thing is that that is one of the beauties, and one of the things that I actually did push for in our discussions is for the special use override. Because I do believe that there is an instance where maybe a hotel could be a very viable option in the downtown area. I entertain that idea. But I also think that there needs to be some due diligence that this hotel is providing parking or a VA service for those cars to somewhere else, or whatever the case may be, in order to bring that business in. Okay? I am not against a church. I am not against a hotel. I am not against any type of business. I just want to make sure that if a church decides to come and open in the J.C. Penney Building, and they decide to have an all-day event on Wednesday and can put 400 people, I believe is the occupancy of that building, that they are coming up with, that there's some interrogation there, or not interrogation, but there's some thought process there in making sure that they're accounting for, how are you going to hold your people, and where are they going to park, and not up and down Main Street, and you've just literally shut down your businesses as a result. Okay? So that, although I know that some people want to say that the special use permit is adding burden, I think that that's adding viability to make sure that we do keep the district in a manner and a fashion operating that we see fit and can evaluate that on a per-use basis instead of an overriding factor. There's only one overriding factor here that I see, and that is a residential storefront facing. That's it. During the discussion, there's nothing to stop you from putting a residence in the back half of the building. There's nothing from first floor, basement, anywhere else. So as far as residence, there's only one very limiting factor. Other than that, I think there are many provisions here to allow for the council to make individual discussions and individual decisions on what's appropriate or not.
Hi. 210 Walnut Street. I just want you to think about this ordinance of making this ironclad or whatever you're going to do. I'm a business owner too, and I want to be protected as well. Apartments on the lower levels are a bad idea. Second levels in the back, whatever, that's fine. Parking is an issue. And yes, I'm on Railroad, and I just really want you to look at these things as a whole. I think there's a lot of places, I know that birds are on the opposite side of the alley. You know, who knows what could go on there? That would protect them. I just really think you should look at this. Don't just, hey, let's do this and... I know that it's smaller, but I think that there's probably some more avenues that need to be looked at. Thanks.
Well, I know the intent of this initially started out was to protect our historic downtown business district. That was first and foremost. It's, it is part of Fort Morgue. It's one of the first things you see when you come into town, and, you know, we have signs on the interstate. We've got kiosks or planters coming right into town that designate historic downtown. That's the intent of what we're addressing here, is the preservation of our historic downtown district, which falls into these, this area. Now, the question comes, and what needs to be looked at, is the expansion of... Now, the question comes, and what needs to be looked at, is the expansion of, do we encompass Ensign and State Street, or does it remain this way? I know that I made the request to have this sent out prior to everybody that had attended those meetings, and I don't know if they received it or not, but that's the intent of this, is that we preserve the downtown business district. It's always, it's not what it used to be, but it still needs to be an important, integral part of our community, and that's a place that needs protection. And then, that's the intent of this here. I know that it, the residence that was built that comes right out onto Main Street is what perpetrated this, and it changes the dynamics of a historic downtown district, so...
Can I ask a quick question? So, if we have, because we're talking about the church, or maybe we're talking about, I don't know if it's Sarah Orange share that's on.
Sarah.
Sarah. So, is there ways, can we be creative with this? And maybe you can't do that with ordinances, it's either black or white, but can we be creative? Is there a way to protect existing businesses so that the Methodist Church, if down the road, and tell me if I'm crazy, if it burns down, or the Sarah House burns down, or, God forbid, knock on wood, something bad were to happen to, you know, Impressions by Bird, is there a way to protect grandfathered or whatever the right proper term is, that those places can be rebuilt without going through the whole special use permit? And it's okay if the answer is no. It's just...
The answer is no.
Can I just clarify?
Go ahead.
It depends on the code. Many of our, many codes that I deal with have that provision for pre-existing uses that, you know, if six months go by for this renovation, in the case of the fire, that could be drafted into the code for all grandfathered uses. So, even if your code doesn't have that, that could be changed and clarified. It looks like it needs to be. So, that's the zoning answer.
If we're trying to protect what we currently have, and I think, I don't think we're trying to exclude any part. I think we're trying to protect what, I think we're trying to do the right thing. I know it doesn't always seem like we're trying to do the right thing, but I think we're, the intent is to try to do the right thing and not overreach again, just like in the past one. We're trying to maybe hit down the middle, and maybe that's what we need to be doing, is we need to look at how we protect those spaces. So, we are protecting the downtown businesses, but we're also protecting those other people that maybe we overreached a little bit by saying you can't do certain parts, so, I mean, I don't know if that's...
Well, it's still open with special use permits. I mean, there's nothing to preclude anybody from a special use. If the church burns down, they can, if it's not grandfathered in, it's, they can come back in and rebuild by a special use permit.
But what could preclude them is a future council, who decides that they do not want a Methodist church, or a whatever, or a daycare center, or a hotel, or whatever. So, there is. It's, they're not protected because there are seven different people here that aren't...
But we have no control over what future councils or past councils...
We do if we grandfather. If we grandfather, we absolutely do, because we protect the business.
Was to stop a future council if they're feeling that way from changing the ordinance. I mean, you know, that's what happens.
You can't change, you can't change, okay, first of all, to your point with this, the church burned down six months, we definitely should add into our zoning code something regarding pre-existing uses and grandfathered uses. Like I said, in other codes that I work with, it's something, you know, if it ceases within six months, it's not. Future councils cannot take away vested grandfathered zoning rights and property rights. That's like a tenant of our real estate law or just our law in our country. So, just want to clarify that. So, that could be changed for the grandfathered purposes. For the, for this specific ordinance, I just want to make clear that we put a moratorium in for six months for a limited time to kind of flush out these issues. And just to clarify, before the moratorium, in a B-1 district, residential was allowed, permitted as of right in multifamily, single, and two-family dwellings, and then also, you know, this ordinance proposes to change, you know, special use for those four things. But right now, in the B-1 district, those four things are permitted as of right under the B-1 district. But this overlay was proposed, as in other areas, to protect, you know, like we said, the central business zoning district. But I just want to urge the council to, within the time of the moratorium, to decide on this. The six-month moratorium passed on July 2nd.
Can I still say something?
So, we have until January of 2020 is when the...
For final adoption.
Right. Not that it will go that long.
And what happens, so, just while we're letting her sign in, so what happens if we don't? It just goes back to what it was?
Unless you extend the moratorium, yes, and it would go back to the B-1, the regular B-1, unless you extend the moratorium, which I would urge only under, you know, special circumstances, if you're still trying to flush out something, that's appropriate. But of course, have future meetings, but not just to, you know, in the other ordinance, you know, you just dismiss for a future date or maybe not at all. In this case, we do need to do something in a couple of months.
Hi.
Hi. Debbie Heisterman, 113 Main Street. I get the just, I mean, our downtown, our businesses, our walkability, that's what you guys are trying to preserve. On the south side of Main, I've taken those buildings, I've put apartments upstairs. I had to go through the whole special use permit. Believe me, that is not a fun task to do. But you asked all of the questions. Do I have the parking availability? Do I have the, right. These people that I have brought in that are now living downtown, they go to our ice cream shop, they walk to the movie theater. It is, in the instance, even the houses that are on the outside of State and Ensign were walkability. Even if you were to extend these and these parking lots did get built, it's just like anything else. They can put a business on the main floor and then put apartments above it. There's not going to be anything, this ordinance isn't going to stop that, and we're still going to have a parking problem. That's why you guys always look when you, there's somebody new business, something that's trying to do, where are you going to park your cars? They talked about a church, if J.C. Penney's was to open a church. We still have two-hour parking on Main Street, and believe me, it is enforced, because he's constantly walking up there, marking all of the tires, so good job for him. It is that entity. That's where we want to keep our businesses. When you start going on the outside, if you start changing that, there aren't that many businesses that are facing State Street or Ensign that I think that we really call our downtown historic businesses, where the majority of our businesses are. That's where I think that this got minimized so that we can have the growth that we need, but responsibly, and be able to have our businesses and hopefully bring back more of the mom-and-pop places. I know, I live right upstairs. I enjoy walking downstairs, going to work, and going right back upstairs. I would never think about building a business or a resident right out my front door, because that does seem wrong. And again, here we go with that common sense thing, and when the one person that got to build that storefront, he can't park out there, he can't park out there overnight. It's, it is what that is, and we can't change it. Changing and allowing this to happen to where all of those front-facing businesses on Main Street, I think is a good idea. And keeping the entity where it is is the perfect spot that you guys kind of worked out. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
You went through the special use permit, but we didn't have Mr. Glameyer then, so, you know.
Oh, is it tougher now, are you saying?
No. It's so smooth, it's just like going down Sherman.
Oh, yeah. I've gone through it a couple times.
You still back there, Steve?
As soon as possible.
Thank you.
Okay. Does council have any comments?
I guess I still don't understand why it's not going all the way to the railroad tracks. Why are we not including the 100 block of Main Street? I guess I still don't understand why.
Well, at one of the meetings, it was brought up that Main Street, when we put the $3 million and some dollars in to revamp it, it stopped at Railroad and did not go down to the 100 block, and I believe that's where that came from. I might be mistaken, but that was my impression.
Well, and also, the parade goes on Railroad down Main Street to Platte. Everything is on the business district on that end. It's not on the other side of Railroad to Railroad.
So, Nina, how do we solve this dilemma?
Well, it seems, if I'm hearing the council correctly, that we're okay with the wording of the draft ordinance. It's that, or I don't even know, is there controversy on the exhibit of the map? I guess, well, two things. Does anyone have in, on the council, any changes to the actual ordinance, the section two, well, it's only section two, section 2400, which discusses the purpose of the overlay district, what's allowed, what's, you know, changed by special permit, use permit? And then the second, which I'll answer, and the second question is the Exhibit A, which is the map of the overlay. And then, depending on your answers to that, I could answer your first question.
Well, I mean, my assumption or recollection of attending those meetings was that we were going to put this together, then have a meeting for a draft proposal of what we were going to get, because it was narrowed down at that point. So, I mean, this kind of goes along the lines of where we just were at with rushing or putting this in without completely following public input, and since we do have time on the moratorium, maybe we need to just step back, look at conducting, doing another finalized third meeting on this one, and the, maybe put the two of them up that went through and...
Yeah, we can definitely do.
I mean, the language on this looks pretty good. I think the only issue is A, and then come up what works best for, and the public input on it.
So, there's two options, just to answer your initial question. We can re, we could either kind of continue the second reading for further out, but I'm not sure if John would want to do that, or if we just want to republish the ordinance for a future, future date. So, those are the two options.
So, we can take this as not the first reading and move it...
Oh, you could also continue the first reading for another date.
Or we can take...
Continue the first reading.
Continue, yes.
Until we get a reading.
Continue the first reading to a specific date. If you could, you know, say a date, maybe it's like a month from now, so then you have enough meetings to re, put the first reading again on. So, maybe the October, October, whatever, that's second.
Is that doable, or?
To have a meeting between now and October 1st?
No, the second meeting, October.
Sometime in October.
Yeah, we can definitely do the second meeting, get something put together before the second meeting in October. If that's what council wants to do, we'll be happy to do it.
Well, the question for John is, would you rather it be the second reading or continue to the first reading?
It doesn't really matter to me. You know, we're going to have to have a public hearing at one of the readings. It was my understanding that, you know, at the last public meeting we had with the business owners, that we were going to draft it and bring it for first reading, so maybe there was some misunderstanding on that. But, yeah, either way, if you want to do first reading at the second meeting of...
October.
October, then it'll be into November before we're finally approved. That's still in time for the moratorium.
So, we're just proposing that, or are we, is it just basically, I mean, there's, is there any reason why we can't approve it on first reading and scheduling the public hearing for October 15th?
No, I was giving those two options, and I was just asking if the clerk had one, you know, one preference, but it sounds like he doesn't either. But Jeff, do you have anything to...
I think, and I don't want to speak for John, but I think it's easier to follow the format of, we do a first reading, and then in the subsequent meeting, we have the public hearing and the second reading, just for timing on publication and everything else. We've, I think that's easier for the process that you use in approving these.
Yeah.
I mean, so we could approve it on first reading. That doesn't mean it gets adopted by any sense.
So, in between the second reading, we will have a public...
Meeting.
Meeting to address for this, of what will be taken to the public hearing and second reading, is that...
And there's nothing wrong with, and I guess I would suggest, at this point, that you wait to do first reading on October 15th, and then do second reading, the first meeting in November.
November.
Because I think it's easier for us to have the public meeting with everybody, and then just do the one meeting, first reading, and then second reading and public hearing on the, on the second meeting. So, I think it makes more sense just to put that off for any kind of a vote until October 15th.
Right, that's why I defer to staff to see what's easiest. So, then your vote, if you're going to go that way, is just to continue this for first reading for October 15th. Make sure you set that date.
Yes.
Is council good with that, or is there...
And you have someone to speak to?
Yes, Ms. Bird. Sorry. First bird, 314 Prospect, also a business owner. I wanted to summarize what I felt happened, having gone to both of these meetings with Mr. Wells. When we left the last meeting, he said a couple of different times that this in no ways was formal, this was just a straw vote, and that he would bring all these results back to us. He also said that he would be sending us an email summarizing what we had voted on those night, that night. So, I was a little surprised when this ordinance got brought before the council. Secondly, my question to you, Mr. Wells, is you talk about the overlay one versus two, yada, yada. What was the percentage difference between those two? Because I know they were really, really close.
They were close. I mean, it was like, it seems like it was almost 30, 30, and 30 with just a few points going more to the other two. I mean, it was within just a couple of points between the larger and the smaller.
Because it felt like that night when we discussed it as a group, more people were more comfortable with it going to the center of the streets on Ensign and State.
And I'm fine with that. I mean, I don't have a preference either way. I want to do what council wants me to do and what the people want, so be more than happy to bring it back, and we can have that discussion.
Okay. I think everybody agrees that that would be wonderful.
Yeah.
If we have one more chance as business owners to voice our concern.
I think it's a great idea.
Because it directly impacts each other.
And if there's any miscommunication, I apologize.
And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Is that it? Council? With that, I would entertain a motion or...
I think at this point, we wouldn't need any action. We'll just, we kind of have direction from council.
Okay, so we'll just move it to October 15th and...
Because it's first reading.
Do we need to take action?
To continue the first reading.
To continue the first reading, that's right.
Is that a motion or a resolution?
Just do it as a resolution, just like you would.
Would you like me to...
Thanks, John. It's been a long day.
Okay, I was waiting for you to ask for it.
I was writing, I did not.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution that we continue ordinance number 1237, establishing an overlay zoning district for first reading to October 15th.
Second. A resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Kevin Lindell, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously. And if I could just point out, this is not yet ordinance 1237.
I'm sorry.
So, we switch, we don't number them until second reading, because they get jacked up that way. up that way.
Oh, that's my fault.
I did not say 1237. I said an unnamed resolution.
That's right, that's right. Unnumbered ordinance at this point.
Yeah, on the first reading.
I just read what was on the paper.
Sorry.
Okay. Next is presentation on first reading of an ordinance 1238, amending the zoning code regarding auto salvage business kennel, catteries, and request to schedule a public hearing on ordinance for October 1st. Mr. Glamire.
All right, thank you. Good evening. What we have tonight, hopefully, is something that will be, try to get and be more business-friendly. We have a couple of businesses that we've not addressed in our land use code. One of them is our auto salvage businesses. I've had a request, and Sarah's had a request, to move an auto salvage business into Fort Morgan, and we just don't have a box to put them in. What zone should they exist, and how can we regulate a business like that? I think it's a great business to have in Fort Morgan. Folks do tend to have some interest in working on their own vehicles and trying to find used parts, and they have to travel out of town to do that, and I think that's a shame. We should be able to get a business here that can offer that service to folks. So, we started to look at that. I worked with the city attorney, and it seems to make a lot of sense. This is an industrial-type business that we would like to see in Fort Morgan. We do have some industrial land that I think would be a perfect place for a business like this. We also have a business park zone in our code. We actually don't have any land that's zoned, a business park in the city, but I also think that's another location where you might find a business like this. And so, again, in the vein of just trying to be more business-friendly in Fort Morgan, I think we'd like to address that, change the zone district table to allow auto salvage businesses in the industrial and business park zones. And I believe those are, as permitted, used by right, if you will, so they don't have to go through any process. And then we did add the B2, which is our general business category, as a possible location, but by special use, so that they would have to come in, go through a process. We'd be able to review that, both through Planning Commission and through City Council. I do think there's some B2 land in the city that could lend itself for a business like this, but I do think we'd want to take a look at that, make sure it was compatible with surrounding businesses in the B2. So, that's the first item that would be in this ordinance. And then the second one is really, just to clarify and codify something that I found, I also had a request to look at a potential animal shelter, if you will. We currently do not, in the land use code, that's Chapter 20 of the code, address kennels, catteries. Nina's gonna talk to rabat trees and corrals in just a second, but they are addressed in Chapter 7 of the code, under the Animal and Livestock section, and it actually refers to kennels, catteries, rabat trees, and corrals being allowed, according to some ordinance, by special use in a couple of locations, the industrial zone and the urban ag zone. But it's not codified under Chapter 20 of the land use code, and it really should be. So, this clarifies what's already in the code, under Chapter 7, and puts it in the proper place, under Chapter 20, so that if somebody comes in and desires to operate a rabat tree, I can say, yes, you can do that, but you have to go to the industrial zone or the urban ag zone in order to do that. So, one is to create and drop a box for a business that we currently do not allow, and one is to codify a place for businesses that we do allow, but in a weird section of the code. So, lots of smiles.
I'm sorry, you're referring to rabat tree.
Rabat tree, right. I will say that I've learned a few things. I always learn something when I open Fort Morgan's code. I love it. I've never heard of a rabat tree either until a few weeks ago.
Roostery.
No roostery, because we don't know.
No roosteries, but rabat trees, the breeding of, I think, more than two, but less than four rabbits, I think, is why it's listed.
That doesn't take long.
So.
I wonder how that works out for you.
Right.
Yeah, that's gonna last for about three months.
Yeah, all the jokes are coming. So, can I answer any questions about what we intend in this ordinance, as we move it forward to second reading and public hearing?
It seems like we're cleaning up that which was.
The land use.
Which was not placed.
Yeah, cleaning up one section of the code, and then really just allowing a business that we don't currently allow, or at least don't clearly allow. And I think that's a shame. I think it's a good business to have in Fort Morgan in the right spot.
Seems relatively non-confrontational to you.
Correct. I hope.
And then just to clarify, if we could, if we're going to approve this for first reading, if it could be with the amendment of adding corals and rabat trees? And the reason why is because in Section 7-2-90, they, it separately defines those four terms. So, even though one could argue that the kennel, you know, covers everything, we want to be consistent with our code. So, anytime kennel or cattery is mentioned in this ordinance, that we would add corrals and rabat trees. And if you could just direct the attorney to make the conforming amendments, to make sure it's written correctly as to that point, when you make a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
And then John can tell me when he needs this ordinance for publication, but later on.
Yeah.
Codified rabat tree.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Glamire?
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thanks for the entertainment.
With that, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution on first reading of Ordinance Number 1238, amending the zoning code regarding auto salvage businesses, kennels and catteries, corrals, and rabat trees, and request to schedule a public hearing on the ordinance for October 1st, and request to have counsel make suitable adjustments.
Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
I'm sorry that I said that reservation.
Next is a presentation and possible action, authorizing city staff to apply for a Colorado Parks and Wildlife Trail Building Grant for the Twaymore property, and authorize the mayor to sign related documents. Mr. Hamer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. I'll try to be really quick. Last meeting, I think we got to talking about Conservation Trust, and we were talking about budgeting some money to get started on the trail of Twaymore. When I went back to my office, I dug through my stack of papers and found a grant opportunity with Colorado Parks and Wildlife. Deadline is vastly approaching. It's October 1st. I'm almost done working on the grant. John's been proofing it a little bit for me. So, tonight, I'm just asking for a resolution of support. We'll have the matching funds budgeted in Conservation Trust. We can apply for up to $250,000 on this grant. I'm looking at about $225,000 right now. That'll include all the trails, a parking lot, trailhead, and pretty much the whole kit and caboodle of trails.
What's the matching requirement on what you're?
30%. Some of it can be used as in-kind, so I think the match will end up being anywhere from 70 to 96 or 100,000. Right now, with everything that I have and all the estimates from our master plan, the whole project's about a $322,000 project.
When is the grant gonna be awarded, this year or 2020?
Spring, spring of 2020. I think it's in March. It's a little more competitive process than GOCO. I'll have to go do a presentation in Denver, and it's reviewed by not only board members, but public somehow, so it's a little bit more of a drawn-out process, but it'll be awarded in the spring. You have two and a half years to complete the project, so I think we'll have plenty of time.
We should have a leg up, I think, due to our trails' master plan, so.
Yeah, there was tons of useful information, so literally, it was, doing the grant application was sorting through the master plan and picking out bits and pieces and the public input. And they had cost estimates for multi-use trail versus nature trail and so forth. So, I've included all that. I've also included a possibility of certain bike features, kind of like the bike park, but, you know, before you have a stream crossing on a nature trail, we could use one of those features as a bridge, those kind of things. So, there's a lot of possibilities that could happen.
Any questions for Mr. Hamer? There are none. I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution authorizing the city staff to apply for a Colorado Parks and Wildlife Trail Building Grant for the Twaymore property, and authorizing the mayor to sign related documents.
Thank you. Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, and a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is presentation, appointing Brent Nation as representative, and Jeff Wells as an alternate for the city on the board of direct, for the city on the Board of Directors for the Management Committee of MEAN. Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is just a regular reoccurring item that we bring back about every three years. In the past, I've been the primary, Brent has been secondary. We've done a really good job, I think, in tag teaming, and Brent's got a great, a great relationship with all the folks at MEAN. I think it'd be great for him to take that primary position, and I know he's been working to get into more leadership opportunities within the organization, and I think this will give him that boost, as well as free up a little bit of my time to be here. So, it's our recommendation.
Any questions?
Sure.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution, appointing Brent Nation as a representative, and Jeff Wells as an alternate for the city on Board of Directors for the Management Committee for MEAN.
Second. Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Would it be possible, you could give us just a brief little deal of what committees were involved with, with MPGA and NMPPE, and that between what you and Brent do?
Yeah, that'd be great. I could do that.
Okay, that'd be appreciated. Next is presentation, presentation of possible action on a resolution authorizing the sale of real estate at Block 4, Lot 1, at Center Point Plaza property. Mr. Wells and Ms. Wilson.
Do you want me?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Nina.
Hi, counsel. This is just, you've already authorized the sale of the real property, this for the development of the housing at Center Point Plaza. It's just doing the closing, the title company's requesting an official resolution with the stamp of Fort Morgan. So, we went through that, where we just said we're memorializing this authorization of
I would entertain a resolution unless anybody has a question.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution authorizing sale of real property in Block 4, Lot 1, of the Center Point Plaza property.
Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Clinton Anderson. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Have a fun part. Thank you for joining us all this time, ladies and gentlemen. 2020 Budget Calendar.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. Now, we're to the main event, I guess, if you will. What are we gonna spend next year? So, we'll have Sarah come up, Sarah Crossway, come up and present the economic development budget for 2020. One thing that isn't listed in this budget, but we're having discussions with right now, is Moore County Economic Development Corporation. They have come and presented a memorandum of understanding agreement on things that they can do to help us, and we've been working to develop that relationship over the last several years. So, that may be something that we add to the budget upon approval of the memorandum of understanding that they gave to us last week. So, sorry, Sarah.
No, no worries. Good evening. So, with the budget, what I went ahead and did was add several line items to really start to be more strategic in how we're spending money for economic development. When I got this position, I had about two line items, which was just advertising and economic development. So, it really didn't show how the money was spent, whether we were spending it in terms of business retention and expansion, or business attraction, or if it came to going out and going to conferences and conventions. So, what I did was I went ahead and added several line items. So, what you see there is I took out the money for advertising, under the impression that once we get someone who comes in and does marketing, they would take over that. And I went ahead and added several line items, such as economic development solutions, which would include some of the programs that we're investing in this year for business retention and expansion, such as working with a firm's site location partnership with Gazelle AI, which provides us companies that have index for growth, and then also our CRM management solutions, which allows us to basically create a database of all the projects that we're working on in terms of economic development. The other line item is business retention and expansion, and that really is focusing on investing money into the businesses that we already have here in Fort Morgan, and assisting them in being able to expand, or being able to continue to be sustainable. Our business assistance program, that's really geared towards the different grants that we offer, such as our downtown as-bill and our facade improvement program. I would like to up the grant amount for each of our, for the facade improvement grants from 3,000 to 5,000, so that's why you see an increase there. And then marketing and outreach, that's really just kind of geared towards if we have to develop marketing flyers geared towards our businesses, or if we're having a workshop for businesses, for example. That's kind of where that money would go towards. And then we also added a line item for Thursday Night Live, so that we can become more strategic in how we plan that event for 2020. And then the other two that were already existing in the prior budget for this year was education and training, and then also conferences and conventions. We've upped the conferences and conventions, just because we're now working with Site Location Partnership. That firm actually gives us six meetings that they schedule for us per year, to go out and meet with site selectors, who are actively looking for new sites for companies around the world. And then also, we get to attend several trade shows with them as well for free, so that's why you see an increase in that line item. If you guys have any questions on anything, I'll go ahead and answer them.
What are some of the business retention and expansion projects?
So, something that I would like to start in 2020 is start working with the Small Business Development Center. They host workshops throughout our region. A lot of them are in Greeley, but what I'd like for them to do is to now come to Fort Morgan and offer some of those workshops, such as Marketing 101 for Small Businesses, or How to Book Keep for a Small Business, or even How to Start a Small Business, things like that. I really want to start bringing workshops. With most of those workshops, you do have to pay a certain fee to have those consultants come out, so that would be like an initiative that we'd like to start in 2020. And then another one, for example, would be like the Business of the Month, right? We pick existing businesses here in the community every month and pay for a month's worth of advertising, so that would be something else that we would continue to do.
And that would come out of that one?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. Now, we're going to recreation, the other fund department. Steve Sampson.
Good evening, counsel. I'll make it as quick as I can. Just highlighting a couple of changes to budgets. We're looking at doing more programming. More programming requires more costs, so we're seeing a couple of changes, including our sports camp budget and our summer activities budgets, where we're looking to do more programming, including more sports camps in preparation for kids for program, for our sports leagues, and working in conjunction with the school district, hopefully to develop better opportunities for our kiddos. Continuing on, I actually skipped one real quick one I wanted to highlight, the special events budget, that's used mainly for our summer concert series in conjunction with Thursday Night Live. We're looking to get about $5,000 more in there, trying to get better acts, trying to draw more people. I know we've used a little bit of money from Ty's budget as well, of community services as well, trying to make that a great event, and I feel like the public really appreciates the traditional event we've hosted there. A couple of other things, just to quickly highlight, going down to, just reviewing my notes here. Uniforms, uniforms. We are, uh, right now, our uniform budget allows us to basically buy a T-shirt or two for staff members. As we continue to progress, uh, in our recreation field with building a field house and we wanna try to get more professional. And one of the things I'd like to do with my staff is to get them in polo shirts that they wear, regularly wear. Uh, I don't know if you come to the armory often, but you know, we have high school students wearing, you know, what they wore from school that day. I'd just like to get them in in a couple of polo shirts and look a little bit more, uh, professional, especially as we're building a new facility to represent the city. Senior trips, that's gonna be the big one. And this is a very similar situation to what we had last year. If you recall, last year, we had a trip to Deadwood, South Dakota that completely decimated our budget. Don't worry about it. We paid for all of it. The seniors paid for it. So you could see in the income in conjunction with it that it covered for itself. We did that again this year. We're going to Branson, Missouri in about two weeks. Uh, and we're gonna be paying about $30,000 worth, about 45 people going to Branson. So. So we're looking at, I've been instructed to put a larger amount into that budget, knowing that it will be paid. Seniors are wanting to go on bigger, longer trips and they're willing to pay for it. So. And then last, education and training. Uh, we are looking to go to Colorado Parks and Recreation Association Conference this year. And we are looking to get our full-time staff certified. Oftentimes, uh, that's a, uh, good standard for individuals in the recreation field. So we're looking to get a little bit more money to get certifications and to maintain a good budget line item to attend that conference regularly to maintain those certifications. Is there any questions?
So where are you going with senior trip next year?
You know? It's funny. I, I've had people talk to me, say, what would it take to go east coast or even overseas?
Oh, I think you're a little short of funds.
Yeah. But, uh, but you'd be surprised how cheap some of these travel companies have trips to. There's a travel company, I won't name them, but I visited with their salesman and he had double occupancy rate about let's see, I wanna say it was about $1,500, including air flight to Tuscany for a week. And I think we would potentially have people interested in doing that, paying $15, uh, $1,500 a head to go spend a week in Italy. So.
How old do you have to be?
Well, well, in that case, you don't, because it's not using any of our funding from from grants and stuff, but yeah.
I fit senior.
Yeah. And part, and the nice thing about that is they actually give you so much of that percentage back as a fundraiser. So I know we're building a new senior center. Can help with it with that. So talking about senior center. I know you guys haven't heard much of this, but I am also requesting a, a new employee to my department. I'm requesting a coordinator to oversee senior activities and active adults. As you know, we are building a new senior center, the Jean Doty Senior Center. I drive by it. Uh, every time I get the chance, they're having wonderful progress over there. Uh, I currently oversee all the senior center operations and I find myself quite busy. A lot of seniors try to catch me, wanna ask me questions and and programming, and I don't have the time to do it. So I'm trying to see if I can get a full-time employee to work out of that building. So.
Any other questions for Steve? Go forth and have fun. Thanks.
Will do. Thank you.
And now we have Ty Hamer with Community Services.
Hello again. Um, my budget's pretty simple. I have a couple of things that I am asking to change and add. Starting along the lines of TNL again. I'd like to increase my developmental promotions budget from 10,000 to 15,000. Most of that money, or that line item was always used for our parties in the parks, um, for TNL events, for the marketing promotion of those. Um, so helping out Sarah with, uh, that project, I wanted to make sure we had enough in there. Also, one thing we did this year was the Bike Park Grand Opening. Um, we used our developmental promotions for that, too. Hopefully, as we move forward on some of these projects, rather than regular ribbon-cutting ceremonies, we can do a little more celebrating of these new facilities and put on some parties. So. Fuel and oil, I increased a little bit based on what we've been spending. Miscellaneous, we've asked to put in 5,000. That was actually discussion came about when I was applying for the GOCO grant. There were some things I would have liked to have done for that grant, uh, which I ended up doing, but, um, photography, Droid imaging of the property, things like that. And I don't have a line item for grant expenses when I'm trying to apply for a grant. So that's kinda what that's there for. Also, um, I'd like to have a spot where if we do a pilot program, we have an innovation committee idea that someone wants to do a community event. Uh, we may have some funding for a pilot program that we could do one year and see if something kicks off and works and then budget for it in the future. New to me, I put in employee recognition. Matt Pickering was your employee the quarter, a couple of quarters ago, I guess. Um, I was told to take him out to lunch and buy him a gift card. I didn't have a budget for it. So now I'll have a budget for it in the future. Um, also be able to award and recognize my superintendents and department heads, uh, when they deserve it. Along the same lines, I've asked for, um, a little bit more in uniforms. Well, since I didn't have any last year, I'm asking for 500. Along the same lines as Steve, you know, we, we've done a lot in my department to, I know it's hot. The air conditioning turned off at 7:30 again.
Put in the budget.
We've done a lot in my department to really build a team of community service people. Doak and Chandra and Steve and Matt and I meet every single week. Um, we've really kinda grown it from just several different departments into a team atmosphere. And I'd like to be able to purchase kinda shirts for the community service staff, um, for my department heads that kinda unify us in the future. So that's really all I have on community services. Budget-wise, any questions?
All right. Thank you very much.
Before, um, the golf course comes up, I'd like to, uh, mention I've worked, you know, you guys had Doak here a couple of weeks ago and he talked about staff and succession planning. I've been trying to work with Susan a lot as far as the Parks Department and the golf course. We're also looking at the possibility of a fourth full-time person at the golf course for the maintenance crew. It boili boils down to, there's a person at the Parks Department that might be really good at the golf course. How do we get him in there and get him to start being trained on irrigation tech, um, spray tech and superintendent-type functions in the future? So just something to keep in mind.
So you're wanting to rob one from the parks, or are you wanting to add?
No, we still want the ones, we still want the new ones for the parks, but there is one guy there that we may move to golf in the future if, if he so choose.
So you're not requesting an additional employee?
Yes, we are. We don't wanna shorthand the parks.
All right. It's now Matt Pickering's, and Matt's coming up to, for support. And fan him?
Matt squared.
Yep, big square, little square. Okay, well, first I wanna thank Matt Goodman and Ty Hamer for their support and help through this process. This is my first time doing it, so hopefully hopefully I can be more, uh, self-sufficient in years to come. The budget for, that I'm requesting is a lot like, uh, the 2019 budget with the exception of increasing, uh, general maintenance and property maintenance to take more aggressiveness to maintaining our property. With, uh, a lot of taking care of a lot of deferred maintenance. Streets remain building and landscaping. We also have, uh, for a little bit more of a education, uh, budget. I've recently hired a, a new assistant and I'm hoping to get him in, in more involved in the golf business as well as some of our maintenance guys wanna, I'd like to get them, uh, some more, uh, certificates and training with the stuff that they use. Uh, there's none. Any questions?
Looks good.
Just a little nervous.
Good job for your first time, Matt.
You don't have to be nervous.
Yeah, you stood, Maddie.
I'm always nervous.
He's like, I'm running away now, running away.
Thanks, Matt. Matt squared. Now, we are to the Police Forfeiture Fund and we'll have Jeannie come up and present that along with, I think, a couple of our other miscellaneous funds. They're fun funds.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I have the last three budgets, and I mean, it really is the last three for the, to be presented to you guys. Um, the Police Forfeiture, um, is the fund where, um, when the, when the police, um, sees things, sometimes we get some money from it. We get a portion. It's built up to about 35,000, but they're not wanting to spend anything next year. They're planning, uh, maybe the year after to get, um, from what Lauren said, they're looking at a, a camera system and they're gonna need a little bit more, so they're gonna have to seize some more stuff. No, I don't know how they're gonna get more.
That was a joke.
Yeah, that was a joke, Nina. Okay, then, uh, the next, is, oh, any questions on that, on forfeiture?
Turn to the camera and say that.
No. Forfeiture. Okay, yeah, we were, probably shouldn't tell them. Okay, um, then the next budget is the fiber network. And the fiber network doesn't have anything in it. That's why I like to do it every year, 'cause it's really easy. It's put zeros on there. The only thing that happens, and this is the old fiber network, not the new one, and so we have to depreciate it out over like however many years we set it out to do. And so we're to, um, we'll be recognizing depreciation, but when you do a budget, you don't put non-cash items on there. But at the end of the year, it will show up on that fund.
Ten-year depreciation?
Pardon? No, it's more than that. I think it's about 20. Yeah. Well, how much was it worth? It's 10,000 a year. What did we spend on that? I don't know.
Was this the bean pole initial?
The initial grant on that, I think, from the state was like 200 and some, 260,000 and
We had probably had to put down.
Or we put up some money as part of that. So it's, it's somewhere around between
Probably 20 years.
350, I think.
Yeah, so. I can look that up, though, and see how much is left. Usually I just look at it at the end of the year, 'cause it doesn't really do anything. Okay, so any other questions about that fund? Okay, then the last one that we have is Riverview Commons. And Riverview Commons is just, um, just exists because the taxes are paid to us and then we pay them onto the bank. And so it's always, should be the same amount each year that comes in and goes out. You can see in the last few years, it was. So, um, there, there isn't anything so far year-to-date because, uh, Chris just wrote the check, I think, uh, probably a week ago, and so it's in later, later months. This is only going through June. So. Any questions on Riverview Commons? I mean, the, the fund.
You don't want any of the other questions about it?
Yeah. So anyway, that's a, any, that's a wrap.
Very good. So that, uh, almost concludes, that concludes the presentation of what we're gonna spend. We have one final item just, just for review, uh, which will be presented in final format, uh, when we adopt the budget. And that is the citywide schedule fees. Uh, what we've done is highlighted any of the changes that we're proposing. And so we can go through that really quickly, um, and ask if there are any concerns about the changes or if there are any additional or issues with existing fees that we have. So on page one, we just have a change of the temporary certificate occupancy costs. Then we have on page two, um, library fees, um, faxing or copies that we provide as a service in there. And if you go to, the next change is on page. It's a ways back here.
Twenty-eight, no.
Is it 28 or is it 33?
No, it's 28. It's a pool party.
Oh, yeah, pool party. Pool parties are going up a little bit from 150 to 200. Uh, they're that much better, I guess. So.
Quite a deal, though.
It is quite a deal. Two hours and we provide all the lifeguards and more fun than you can ever imagine. So. Uh, the next one is on page 33.
Oh, it's on 29.
No, it's on 29. Some are blue and some are, some are blue and some are red.
Yeah, they're hard to see.
Pool open swim day is free for zero to two-year-olds. Taking out any fee right there. Now we're on 33.
Thirty.
Now we're on 30.
They are really hard to see on here.
Which one is it on 30 that's changed?
Private swim lessons went from an hour to a half hour.
Oh, there you go, okay.
If you look in the margin, there's a
There's a little line. There it is. Yep, got it. So it went to half hour, per half hour versus one hour. Then on 33, we've got street closure application, uh, permit fee, $50.
What is that? I know, it's, it's probably something explanatory, but.
But we, we have various areas that they wanna close the street for different reasons. Uh, sometimes you might have a church that wants to put on a block party or, um, a neighborhood that wants to do something like that.
Neighborhood watch party or something.
Right, and so we look at that permit fee and, or that's the permit fee for them to apply for that. And then, of course, the wastewater treatment plant laboratory analysis fees. Um, the mayor would know pretty much what every one of these are and why we charge what we do. Uh, if you have any questions about what they are, I'm happy to answer it.
I can actually probably run some of them.
Yeah, so we, uh, we also provide this service to a lot of municipalities around the eastern plains, um, and they're very happy. We're the only service next to Denver for a lot of these and our fees and our location makes it a lot easier for them to get them to us. And our fees are very, uh, affordable for those communities. So we actually are the hub of environmental protection in northeast Colorado when it comes to these tests.
And it's not like, I mean, protecting a dollar, um, dollar each on some of these.
Yeah, yeah, we're not, it's not a huge amount that we're doing. So. So that's our
Pretty reasonable, because the chemicals to run them, pricey, yeah.
So are we at least?
Were we making our money back and?
Yeah. And so, uh, that is it for our presentations on the, uh, budget. One of the things, um, I wanna, I guess, talk to Council about at this point. We've got, under the rules of procedure, I have to present the formal budget by the second meeting in October, so that would be the October 15th. We adopt this through an ordinance. We do two readings. We have a public hearing, just like we do all the others. Uh, we are currently having a few issues with our software on getting everything to line up and work the way that we want to. Jeannie's working really hard at that and, um, Cassel's better be working harder. I know she had a call with them today. What, what I would propose that we do, we can do it one of two ways. We can bring the full, subject to getting the software lined up, we can bring the full proposed 2020 budget to the October 1st meeting for first reading, or we can bring it merely as a review, a final review of all of the different items, um, and answer any questions and then have a first reading and the formal presentation on October 15th. It's whatever you would prefer.
I'd like to have some time to go through and review the entire budget prior to bring it forward.
Okay, very good. Then we will get the, get, uh, like I said, subject to us getting all the, some of these quirks worked out, we'll get you a final budget for review on October 1st, um, for, you know, we can go through and if there are any questions, we can answer those and if there are any questions, we can answer those questions, and if there, the other thing that we're going to be looking at before the final, suppose we might bring a budget that's not completely balanced at that point, because there's some things, we might have to go back and talk to people about cutting different things, and there may be some additions or changes that Council might have. So the idea would be on October 15th that I'd bring a balanced budget with the changes and any amendments that Council had on the first. All right, that's what we'll do. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to all the staff and Council. This has been a long process, but I think effective.
It's better than waiting till now to start it.
This is true. That's happened.
Well, there's a lot of them that do. Next is the consent agenda. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight's consent agenda includes Item A, approval of the disbursements and payroll for August, and Item B, approval of the minutes of the September 3, 2019 City Council regular meeting. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine business by the Council and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
I would entertain a resolution unless somebody has questions.
I put my agenda away. Can you take it?
Oh, goodness sakes.
Clint's got it, Clint's got it.
Your Honor, I, oh.
You got it?
Yeah, Your Honor, I offer a resolution to approve the consent agenda as is.
Second.
We want to pay them.
Exactly. I have a resolution by Clint Anderson and a second by Kevin Lindell, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Public comment and audience participation for items not on the agenda. Oh, yeah.
I'll make you sign it four more times.
Okay, moving on. Reports by officials and staff.
I'll just, I just want to thank all of the members of the public that have come to this meeting and all of our other public meetings. It takes a lot of work to get good policy that's going to work well for the community, and I think it says a lot about our community and their vested interest in the work that we do as staff, as Council, for them to come in and share their opinions, and like Lisa pointed out, it's time out of their schedules to be here, and I just have really appreciated the feedback and going to different meetings in the public and hearing their concerns, and I hope that they understand that what we do here is really their work for them, and I think that Council did a good job tonight in listening, and hopefully staff will do a good job in following up with all of the concerns and make sure we get those addressed. We've got a lot of construction projects wrapping up, and a lot of projects we're trying to get finished before the end of the year, and appreciate everybody's patience with some of the roads and things that might be shut down or detoured right now, but most of them should be opening up. Overall, I think things are going well. Were there any, anybody else have anything?
There was paving at Center Point today.
There is paving at Center Point, and 34 should start tomorrow, so we might be getting that stuff off of Highway 34 here pretty soon, so it's very exciting.
I'd just like to make one public comment. I want to give kudos to our police department. Saturday, they were asked to supply a funeral escort for the Schmeckley family. Zane Schmeckley was killed in a plane accident, and he had a lot of people that came from out of state or out of, around the state to ride in a procession, and at the last minute, the police department was asked to, if they would be able to do that, and they stepped up and beyond the call of duty and made a really sad situation and put a bright spot in the Schmeckley family's day, and they wanted me to extend a very heartfelt thank you from the family for what your guys did. They did a phenomenal job, and you guys are the pride of the plains, seriously, so thank you very much.
Appreciate that. I'll pass that on to staff as well.
Please do.
Bids, meetings, and announcements.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city is accepting sealed bids for three pond aerators until 2:45 PM on September 25th, and sealed bids for 112.5 and 150 KVA pad-mounted transformers until 2:45 PM on October 3rd. Under meetings, the Planning Commission will meet on September 23rd at 4:30 PM here at City Hall. The Heritage Foundation will meet on September 26th at 4:00 PM at the Museum Community Room, and the next City Council regular meeting will be October 1st at 6:00 PM here at City Hall.
And the final item on our agenda is an executive session for discussion of a personnel matter under CRS Section 24-6-4024F, and not involving any specific employee who has requested discussion of the matter in open session. Any member of this body or any elected official, an appointment of any person to fill an office of this body, or of an elected official, or personal personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters, personal to particular employees, and the following additional details provided for identification. City manager's annual evaluation. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session. Second. I have a motion by Lisa Northrup, a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Same, signed for opposed. Motion carries, and we will adjourn to executive session.